Good evening. Welcome to the regular Bellevue City Council meeting for October 3, 2022. Tonight, we have Karen Roberts, our deputy city clerk, taking the place of Charmaine Arundado. So I will refer to you as city clerk, even though you're deputy city clerk, just because that's, I can't change that. So clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
You bet. Mayor Robinson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Newenhouse?
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Robertson?
Here.
Councilmember Stokes?
Here.
Councilmembers on?
Here.
Could you please stand up and join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice, equal.
Thank you. So we have three proclamations tonight. The first one is Domestic Violence Action Month proclamation, and Councilmember Robertson's going to read that.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects one in three women and one in four men during their lifetime through physical violence, and whereas, on average, 20 people per minute experience sexual assault, physical violence, or stalking by an intimate partner in the United States, that's more than 10 million people per year, and whereas domestic violence offenses comprise nearly 50% of all crimes against persons in Washington State, and whereas domestic violence is widespread and has devastating impact on survivors, children, families, and our community, and whereas domestic violence does not discriminate and crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal barriers and is sustained by indifference, and whereas ending the cycle of this vicious crime requires the courage of survivors and the support of the larger community, and whereas education prevention and intervention efforts to end the cycle of domestic violence are imperative to not only protect survivors but also to increase public awareness and the severity and extent of domestic violence. Now therefore, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2022 as Domestic Violence Action Month.
Thank you. The next one is National Disability Employment Awareness Month, and Councilmember Zahn's going to read that. We're going to let Blaine talk after the proclamation, and we'll do a photo, and then we'll do the next proclamation. So go ahead and start.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas more than one in four U.S. adults, or 61 million Americans, have some type of disability, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and whereas October 2022 marks the 77th anniversary of National Disability Employment Awareness Month, and whereas the purpose of National Disability Employment Awareness Month is to educate about disability employment issues and celebrate the many and varied contributions, talent, and value of America's workers with disabilities, and whereas people with disabilities continue to experience disproportionate instances of unemployment discrimination, poverty, and economic instability, and whereas workplaces that welcome the talents of all people, including people with disabilities, are a critical part of successfully building inclusive communities and strong economies, and whereas the City of Bellevue embraces the diversity, culture, and contributions of many residents with disabilities in our schools, government, workforce, and community by consistently and diligently working to make city employment programs, services, and facilities accessible to people with disabilities, and whereas numerous organizations and city staff in Bellevue work with constituents and communities to develop programs and policies that encourage equity in hiring for people with disabilities. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2022 as Disability Employment Awareness Month in Bellevue, and urge all residents to support disability equity by recognizing the value and contributions of people with disabilities in our workplaces, and pledge to take steps throughout the year to recruit, hire, retain, develop, and advance individuals with disabilities to foster full participation and economic self-sufficiency.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Blaine Emerson.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, and City Manager Miyake, for the opportunity to accept this proclamation today and to say a few words. There are several members of Bellevue's Disability Allyship Resource Team, or DART, in attendance with me tonight. DART is one of the city's three employee resource groups that works on a volunteer basis to provide the City of Bellevue employees with important information, resources, and support related to several key areas, including race, gender, race, gender, and sexuality, and, in DART's case, disability. These groups are made up of both those who are part of the identity group, as well as allies, all working together toward the goal of equity for our employee population. This is part of the city's commitment to diversity, equity, access, and inclusion, and we're honored to be here tonight to represent the DART Employee Resource Group and to share in support of this important recognition month out in the community as well. The city recognizes the talents and perspectives people with disabilities bring to our organization, and is committed to the ongoing effort of removing barriers to employment for this population. The DART ERG has a subcommittee that focuses specifically on issues related to disability employment and stands as a partner with our human resources personnel, many of whom are part of the ERG themselves. Staff across the city have many opportunities, not just in the month of October, but year round, to learn more about the benefits and importance of disability employment and further ensure that the City of Bellevue stands as a model to recruit, hire, retain, and promote people with disabilities. As just one example of this work being recognized, it is my pleasure to highlight that in 2018, Bellevue received the Governor's Public Employer of the Year Award for its Supported Employment Program, which partners with local employment agencies and allows the city to tap into the talent pool of people with disabilities, people with intellectual and developmental disabilities, using a supported employment model. Thank you again for your support of something that is so near and dear to all of our hearts and means so much to many of our community members as well. I'd love to invite any DART members in attendance with me tonight to come up to the front at this time to accept the proclamation.
Great. And we're going to do a photo op with everybody. So let's go down, and we'll hand you the proclamation, and then take a photo.
Perfect.
We have one more proclamation, but before we read this last proclamation, I'm going to ask Councilmember Robertson to read the last paragraph of her proclamation, because it has a phone number.
Yeah, it was printed on the backside, and I took a breath as I flipped it, and it was, "Thank you." So, okay. So when I read the proclamation, we announced that October 2022 is Domestic Violence Action Month in Bellevue, and we urge all citizens to speak out against domestic violence through support of local efforts, including those by Lifewire. Lifewire is an agency that provides domestic violence survivor support from housing to legal advocacy to mental health therapy towards preventing and ending domestic abuse in our communities and increasing public awareness of and action on this issue. And we encourage survivors, their loved ones, and concerned citizens to learn more by calling Lifewire helpline at 425-746-1940, or by visiting www.lifewire.org.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last proclamation is condemning antisemitism, and Deputy Mayor Newenhouse will read that.
Thank you, Mayor. And before I start, I just wanted to thank Dr. Linda Whitehead and her excellent DEI team for doing some due diligence on this proclamation. Whereas Bellevue is one of the most diverse cities in Washington, and Jewish people are an important part of the city's fabric, with members at Temple Beni Torah and Temple de Hersh Sinai in Bellevue contributing in many ways to the community, and whereas, according to the Anti-Defamation League, in 2018, reports of antisemitic incidents were up 60% in Washington State from the previous year. And in Seattle, reports of hate crimes and incidents were up nearly 400% from 2012 to 2018. And whereas hate and bias are not acceptable in our community, the city council remains committed to our vision of welcoming the world and recognizing our diversity as a key strength for the city and our character. And whereas any victims of antisemitism in Bellevue are encouraged to report such incidents as hate crimes or bias-related events so that Bellevue police can respond to and track them. And whereas the city council supports and adopts the May 26, 2016 International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance's Working Definition of Antisemitism, which helps protect all people in Bellevue from acts of hate and bigotry. And whereas the IHRA Working Definition is proven to be an essential tool for government and law enforcement agencies in the United States as they work to identify contemporary manifestations of antisemitism, and both respond directly to it and provide training and education about it. Now therefore, I, on behalf of the Mayor Lynn Robinson, Mayor of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council, do hereby proclaim our condemnation of antisemitism, as defined by the IHRA as supporters and allies of our Jewish community. Bellevue strongly stands against hate, bias, or violence based on race, nationality, gender, disability, or religion, and I urge all residents to come together and support our Jewish neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Regina Friedlin. Would you like to come up to the podium and speak?
On behalf of the American Jewish Committee, AJC, we extend our thanks to the City of Bellevue, Washington, the city council, Chief Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Officer Linda Whitehead, and Mayor Lynn Robinson on this resolution to adopt and utilize the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance IHRA Working Definition of Antisemitism with tremendous gratitude and appreciation of Deputy Mayor Jared Newenhouse for initiating this effort and bringing it to fruition. We are grateful for your continued support of the Jewish community and recognizing the importance of the endorsement and use of this definition of antisemitism. A fundamental step in combating the alarming surge in antisemitic incidents is to be able to define what antisemitism is, both in overt acts and through unconscious bias. The IHRA Working Definition of Antisemitism is a comprehensive resource that describes antisemitism in the many forms it manifests. Bellevue is the leader, as Washington's first city and the first in the Pacific Northwest, to take this vital step against Jew hatred and in affirming that antisemitism will not be tolerated here in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's do a photo. Okay, city clerk, do we have anybody signed up? No. Before that, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Do you have anybody signed up for oral communications?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have 10 pre-registered speakers this evening for oral communications. As a reminder, oral communications is for a total of no more than 30 minutes. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to speak, and only three speakers are allowed to speak to any one particular side of a topic. Our first speaker this evening is Graciela Lang.
I've come to address a public service, actually, public safety concern regarding the behavior of panhandlers in the City of Bellevue. I have lived in Bellevue since 1995 and pay can county property taxes. The city's Panhandling Handout, available on the website, mentions that panhandling is not illegal and protected by the First Amendment. Panhandlers have every right to beg for money on our city streets. However, I also, as do our residents, have every right to refuse to give them money and by doing so not become a recipient of their belligerent, crude, and profanity. Every resident should feel safe, no matter where they find themselves in our city. We are inching closer to becoming Seattle and Portland. The encounters I've had were extremely aggressive. As a retired nurse, I understand there is a fine line between verbal and physical abuse, and it does not take much to cross over. The handout informs residents to report harassment by calling 911. I believe this is not an appropriate use of emergency services. There should be a non-emergent number in place to report these incidents. How are these incidents tracked? What action is taken as a result of this reporting? How is this information communicated to leadership and what is done with the information provided? We need a system of accountability, as reporting this harassment without any tangibles serves no useful purpose. The handbook reveals these panhandlers target locations where there are a lot of pedestrians and motorists. During the summer, in the heat of summer, I saw a mother with school-aged children during school hours and infants in the sweltering heat. It could be raining and biting cold, and they are still out there with their kids as sympathetic props. This is child neglect. This took place at the westbound exit of Victoria Boulevard and QFC. There needs to be some appropriate follow-up to make sure that the health and welfare of these children are safeguarded. We should not, we should consider having a panhandler's car given to them to protect the rights of our residents. Panhandlers should not be allowed to station themselves on traffic islands. They should not be allowed to obstruct the interstate. They should not be allowed to obstruct the right-of-way for pedestrians, particularly those with disabilities, using assistive aids. Panhandlers should not be permitted to obstruct the flow of traffic, particularly at the westbound exit of Victoria Boulevard. Lastly, I ask that our citizens stop giving money to these people. They are disabling these individuals, not enabling them. I ask that they consider donating to the many organizations that are listed in Bellevue's website, and I certainly hope that we can move forward to keep Bellevue, and to make Bellevue safer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lang. Mr. Miyake, you did a nice presentation, I think it was last week, on our homeless outreach coordinators and the program that we've been doing. Is there a particular number that people should use when reporting?
I do not, and I have that on hand, but it's certainly something we could provide the viewing public and the council.
Okay. That would be great. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Flavio Ribero, and he is joining us virtually. Mr. Ribero, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Mr. Ribero, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, your time starts now.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right. So my name is Flavio Ribero. I have a statement in support of the recommendations from the Trees for Liveability Tree Code Study. I've lived in Bellevue for 10 years. I moved here for work. Today, I'm a Partner Engineering Manager at Microsoft. And I first visited Bellevue in 2008. I was immediately impressed with how many trees the city has, how beautiful the trees made the city, and most places, as you know, are not like this. And for reference, the Bay Area would be an obvious place for me to live, but I was never really interested in moving there, specifically because I think Bellevue is more pleasant, and Bellevue is closer to nature. But if Bellevue didn't have its trees, I don't think I would be here. And I've interviewed and hired many people who have moved here and stayed here for the same reason, despite other job offers. So I'm certain I'm not the only one. And so I see the trees and nature as a superpower for the city. Personally, I live in a house surrounded by more than 20 large cedars, and first, to me, they hold far more value than the house itself. I could easily renovate or improve the house. It's just money, but I can't do the same for the trees. And they're much older than the neighborhood, and I wouldn't be surprised if they're older than everybody on this call. So, and in the 10 years I've lived here, I've seen many properties change hands. It's sadly common to see a new property owner cut down massive 80-year-old trees immediately after buying a property, usually before they even move in. And, you know, I've seen next-door neighbors doing this, right? It's pretty sad. One day of chainsaws, and then it's all gone. So what I see here in these 10 years is a clearly negative replacement rate for large trees. And once the trees are gone, we have to wait an entire human lifetime for them to grow back. So people here have a lot of money, but money can't buy a time machine. And once the trees are gone, the animals are gone, it's game over. And even if we had the patience and perseverance, we can't live long enough to undo the damage that's happening during our watch. So I think it's our responsibility to act and to not kick this can down the road. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker on the list is Peter Marshall.
I'm Mayor Robinson and city council members. Peter Marshall, I've lived in Bellevue, kind of in the Anatai neighborhood, for about 45 years. And over that time, I've become one of the many mayors the city has of your extensive park system in particular. I use the system a lot. I'm here today to discuss a possible addition to that system, and it's relatively a small property, but it's a critical one in terms of its function. This is the proposed Isola Development Site, and 12 acres adjacent to the Cougar Mountain, Redtown Trail entrance, and Coal Creek Trail that comes to an end right at that site, and could become a very important part of it if the city agrees with the public benefit to be obtained by that. I know decisions are coming up soon on the development proposal and the permits required, and we will be much involved in that, I believe. One park site that reminds me a little bit about this is the, although it sounds very different, the waterfront properties obtained to complete the Maidenbauer Bay Waterfront Park. Multi-millions of dollars dedicated to purchasing residential properties, and owners of those places moving to other places. Probably they didn't all want to leave, but I guess they made out all right, and the public has certainly benefited by the wonderful waterfront park development. What made me think about that was the willingness to invest a lot of taxpayer money and obtain whatever grants and so forth helped to make that possible, but also the realization that the public benefit of a property at some point can supersede the residential amenity provided. I'm sure the houses were very nice along the waterfront. In this case, in the case I'm thinking of at the juncture of Coal Creek Park and Cougar Mountain, the public benefit there, there is manifold, and I won't have time to go into all of them, but there is a statement in the Coal Creek Watershed Assessment Report in 2021 that describes that this has got the city's highest quality riparian habitat and canopy cover, and is found in this watershed out of several in the city and near the city.
Mr. Marshall, your time is up.
They said it would be the backbone of Bellevue's greenways and natural areas, and I hope those factors will go into your consideration of the development of Coal Creek.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. You can send us that, the rest of your speaking points by email. You could send it to Karen, maybe she could give you her email address.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker on the list is Emmanuel Solis. Mr. Solis is joining us virtually. Mr. Solis, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Your time starts, we can. Your time starts now.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson and city council members. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address you regarding a topic that you've heard before. I want to speak tonight about the importance and urgency to enact effective and immediate tree preservation policies. I live in Chedwood Forest, the Chedwood Forest neighborhood in northeast Bellevue. I lived here for more than 10 years. I'm a transplant as well. But in all, in these 10 years, I've witnessed how my neighborhood has been transforming from Chedwood Forest more and more into Chedwood Plains. Over the last 10 years, we have documented more than 50 majestic evergreens trees, ranging from 50 to 200 years old, being cut down. From our research and what we've seen, there are two reasons why these trees are being removed. Number one, developers come, buy the original house. Our neighborhood was within the 60s, so these are rambles with decent lot size. These houses are super attractive to them because they can just destroy them, cut all of the trees, and then build a house that is three times that size. Sell that for a million, couple of million dollars, and make a lot of money. But that's a tragedy. It's not only an environmental tragedy, but it's also accelerating affordable housing crisis. The other option, homeowner doesn't like the tree, want more sunlight, so then they cut down the trees. I presume they replace those trees with an AC unit, so they have to keep it cool in summer. So that's another tragedy, accelerating global warming. Or the tree is removed because it's dangerous and it's unfortunate, but that's a valid reason to cut down the tree, as long as it gets replaced. There are plenty of reasons to act now, before it is too late, as has been said before. The City of Bellevue has a goal to achieve 40% tree canopy by 2030, and you have a recent report from June that claims that tree canopy has actually increased since 2019. I'm very skeptical that that is true. I'm a data guy, I'm an engineer, and I love data, but it's hard to believe that that's the reality when all of the analytical data says the opposite. Also, keep in mind, 100 feet tree is not the same as a 10-foot tree, so do not count that as the same. Even if you believe this report is true, there is no reason not to protect these supposed gains. So please enact the tree policies now. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker on the list is Zachary Cooper. Mr. Cooper is joining us also remotely. Mr. Cooper, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
We can. Your time starts now.
Great. Thank you. As a new resident of Bellevue, I am deeply grateful to the city for its adoption of the IHRA Definition of Antisemitism, which will help to combat anti-Jewish actions and intimidation here on the East Side. With this decision, the City of Bellevue joins a growing number of U.S. states and cities that have endorsed this working definition. Thank you, Bellevue, for supporting the Jewish community and standing against antisemitism. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker on the list is Bill Westra.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, council members, and staff. I'm Bill Westry, a 33-year resident of Bellevue and a founding member of the People for Climate Action Group. As an octogenarian, I don't usually come to testify much anymore, but this Environmental Stewardship Initiative budget is very important to me, so I want to speak about that. stewardship initiative budget is very important to me, so I want to speak about that. In the executive summary of the 2023-24 preliminary budget was this statement. The budget increases, the budget draft increases spending to further the goals set out in the Environmental Stewardship Initiative. This comes as a very welcome news to us in PCA, who have worked for this for several years. But we have a concern that we haven't seen any of the details yet. We sent an email on September twenty-third asking for those details to the staff and to the council, but we haven't heard back yet. So I'm here to rearticulate the specific questions that we would like to have answered regarding those details. They are, one, what is the total ESI spending level for 21, 22? Two, what is the proposed total ESI spending level for 2023, 24? Three, how is the proposed 23, 24 ESI spending broken down in terms of individual full-time employees staffing numbers? Four, what are the proposed responsibilities, functions, and job prescriptions for the different 23, 24 full-time employee positions? And finally, five, what is the detailed plan for using the remaining ESI 23, 24 budget allocations after the full-time employee positions are covered? It's my sincere hope that the responses to these questions and any ensuing discussion that follows will enable PCA to fully support this budget item. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and best wishes to you all.
Thank you. I know Mr. Westry sent us an email, and I know it got forwarded to the environmental staff, but can we make sure he gets a response, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker on the list is Betsy Hummer.
I'm Betsy Hummer, and I want to thank the mayor, deputy mayor, and council members for your dedication and hard work representing all the people of Bellevue. As a Bellevue citizen, I'd like to let you know I fully support the proposed budget regarding public safety. The people in Bellevue deserve to feel and be safe. The community, police and fire departments, as well as staff and support, found the Community Crisis Assistance Team Pilot Project a success. I am really happy to see that it is meant to be funded. Officers during that program, officers provide security and safety while deescalating a crisis, and the mental health professionals provide services to those in crisis. I've had direct contact with the Fire Department Cares Team, and I'm grateful it is included in this budget as well. The foresight to establish a transit team, as well as additional officers for our growing community, cannot be emphasized enough. This budget will ensure Bellevue Police reduce the fear of crime, as well as reducing crime itself for the people in Bellevue. In addition, for future consideration, I encourage you to consider take-home vehicles for police officers and child daycare for our public safety employees. I am also pleased to see a well-deserved shout-out to Bellevue Green and Clean. This effort from a dedicated Bellevue family is the best of Bellevue. Getting neighbors involved in the environmental care of our city is great to get us each on a daily basis, keeping our city clean and a city in a park worthy of its name. Thanks to council, too, for providing Nextdoor and MindBellevue app, not every community has them, for citizens in Bellevue to keep in touch. Thanks again for your service.
Thank you. Our next speaker on the list is Alex Zimmerman.
Zihai, my dirty damn Nazi fascist and bandita and psychopath, mafia cartel. My name, Alex Zimmerman, and president of Stand Up America. So last week, I go to plan commission, I start going right now to all commission what is Bellevue have, because I start to understand why system fallen, you know, what does mean, why we have a collapse. So I ask them very simple question. I have a request for them. Amazon want bring approximately thirty, thirty-five thousand people. My question right now, very simple, how much each citizen of Bellevue will pay or spend for situation when Amazon come and make a dozen and dozen billion dollars? If we spend this money from us package, not for Amazon, for environment, what is good, for job and business, what is we have around? Is this not cheap, from my understanding? I'm business consultant, so a little bit analysis, too. But I want what is this planning commission bring to you exactly figure so we need to understand what's going on? How much cost each Bellevue citizen when Amazon come? It makes a billion and billion dollars. So, from my understanding, it's cost approximately each Bellevue citizen five thousand dollars per year. So we multiply by hundred fifty thousand plus thirty thousand or thirty-five, what is bring Amazon, we talking about one billion dollars personal private money. It's a ton of money. Who responsible for this, and who will pay us back? It's us expenses, only because Amazon come and doing their business. So why I need pay for them? You know what it mean? It's nothing for free in America. I am not working for Amazon, I'm disabled senior citizen, low income. Why I need spend approximately five thousand dollars plus minus? I don't guarantee you this. Planning Commission post to be brings this. Why each of Bellevue citizen post to be spend this money? Because Amazon want be a big, 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 big. Can you explain to me? Is this America? You know what it mean? Everybody post to be responsible what's he doing? When they doing this, you don't doing nothing. All council doing nothing. Plan Commission don't doing nothing, too. So maybe you ask Amazon, give every citizen five thousand dollars per year compensation. It's us money. Why I need spend this money? Who can give me answer? Somebody from you give me this answer? I don't hear you. Was this a problem what is we have right now? Stand up, America. Stand up, Bellevue. We don't need pay for fat, fat, fat pig. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker on the list this evening is Heidi Dean. Our next speaker tonight is Heidi Dean. She's joining us virtually. Ms. Dean, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
We can. Your time starts now.
Thank you so much. Good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, and council members. When I thought that tonight's consent calendar contained an item pertaining to purchasing property in Eastgate for a neighborhood park, I thought, that's awesome! You know, Eastgate's been waiting for this. So I clicked through to the documents to see the details. I was expecting to see an undeveloped lot, and it was a little surprising, but not totally shocking to see there's an existing home there. I do believe there was a home on the Ginsburg property in Bridle Trails when that was purchased. So, but what was shocking was seeing the photos of the home that exists on that property. I don't know if you've actually looked at the the listing, the real estate listing, because unlike the home on the Ginsburg property, the home on the Eastgate property is not dilapidated and tear-down worthy. As a matter of fact, it's quite a nice home that was beautifully and fully updated in 2018. And the yard is also beautifully landscaped, and it's quite a peaceful little oasis. So I don't get it. Why would the city engage in the same behavior as builders like MN Custom Homes and J-Mark, both of which have decimated the Eastgate neighborhood with their practices of demolishing older, smaller homes like the rambler on this property? Are we really to believe that this was the only property available in Eastgate upon which the city could build a neighborhood park? How will the Eastgate neighborhood be served by destroying a home that's a very nice home and perfectly suited for single people, empty nesters, or small families? Especially when the park that will be built will be smaller than every other mini park in the city except one. So if you look in your email, you'll see that I've sent you an inventory I did of all the city's parks minus the beach and waterfront parks. The proposed Eastgate Park property is ten thousand three hundred square feet. And just as a reminder, one acre equals forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. So what that means is that the Eastgate mini park would be a quarter acre or less after it's developed. And that really begs the following questions. Number one, is this really a good investment of our parks acquisition money for the Eastgate neighborhood? What could the community realistically do in a quarter acre? Number two, is it equitable? As indicated by my parks inventory, other neighborhoods around the city have much larger neighborhood and mini parks within their borders. Will this be it for Eastgate? Shouldn't the city continue to look for property that will be large enough for the active Eastgate Community Association to be able to host community gatherings? Because this property doesn't appear to be it. So therefore, I urge the council to put a pause on the acquisition of this property and to direct staff to continue researching appropriate properties in the Eastgate area for a neighborhood park that will meet the recreation and gathering needs of those folks residing in that area. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Our final speaker on the list this evening is Lucy Keller. Ms. Keller is also joining us virtually.
Hello?
Ms. Keller, can you hear me?
Yes, indeed.
Your time starts now.
So how interesting that I follow Heidi. I live in Eastgate. I'm on the board of the Eastgate Community Association, and a few of us were really excited to see that the city was about to purchase a property in Eastgate for a little pocket park. I had not considered Heidi's perspective. I see her point. We just don't have any parks in Eastgate. And, okay, it's not very big. It's a corner lot, but it is in the area where most Eastgate residents live. And I think it would be nice to just have this little oasis of green space. I'm assuming that the city would maintain the greenery that's already there, in particular the large trees. I think it would be really nice to just have a little oasis like that in the Eastgate neighborhood. So I would like you to approve this resolution, and that's all I have to say tonight.
Thank you. That ends oral communications for this evening.
Do you want to see if there's anybody else out there?
We have reached the thirty-minute limit.
Well, I'll tell you, if there's somebody else who'd like to speak, we can put them in at the end of the meeting. So you might ask the question and see if there is anybody else.
Is there anybody else in the audience or attending remotely that would like to speak this evening? If you're attending virtually, please use star nine to raise your hand. No one has raised their hand.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So we have something in our packet that I'd like to direct you to. Mr. Miyaki, would you like to introduce it and just describe it? I know we're not having a presentation.
Sure, sure, mayor. It is the reports of the community councils, boards, and commissions. It is a report, actual written report. There's no presentation this evening, and it pertains to the Parks Boards' look and analysis of the capital program for the parks, which is part of their duty. And that, you know, this is feedback for you to consider for later as we move forward in the budget.
Thank you. Councilmember Stokes, I believe you're the liaison for the Parks Board. Would you, is there anything you want to comment on with this?
Well, I think it's a, it's a preliminary start on this. We're gonna have a discussion of it, and it's a good overview. It's done every time in the budgets, and, you know, it's been very helpful. It's a very good Parks group, and I think that it will be something that will really help us in making our decisions on the Parks levy and, not the levy, that's that's another item, on the Parks budget, just separate. And I encourage everybody to read when it gets published, and I think they've done a good job. I, is not, is there anything else you particularly want, or just kind of?
No, that's, that's great.
Yeah, that's good. Okay.
Thank you. Okay, and then we have the report of the city manager.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Councilmembers, there is one item under the city manager's report this evening. It is a written informational update from Lori Hoffman, the city's arts community manager, and is on recent arts activities within the city of Bellevue. There's, again, no formal presentation planned this evening, but do feel free to reach out to Lori if you have questions.
Okay, and that's in the packet as well.
Hi, mayor.
Yeah.
It sounds really is on there. I can say that you'll find it very interesting in terms of what the Parks, what the Arts Commission and the staff are working on, including working for the, including things in in there for the Bell Red Arts District and a lot of things that that are very exciting. Things been working on for some time. We're getting to a point of getting those in place. So again, both of these are very good pieces and good recommendations from these two committees.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lee?
Thank you. I had a chance to read over the report. It was very, very exciting, the things they're doing. It's amazing. The only thing that I would hope that we, the city council, would know about some of these programs. To me, most of it is wonderful, brand-new news, but it's been happening, going on for quite a while. And I noticed by going out, watching the art work that's being acquired by the commission, that's great, except I think it'd be important for the council to be aware of it, so that we can either praise it or otherwise. That's opportunity for us to step in. So I just want to, I don't know who would be responsible for that, but it's something to note. Thank you.
I think our city manager directed comments or questions to Lori?
Yeah, Lori Hoffman.
Hoffman, yeah. Okay, thank you. So we have two remote participation requests for our October tenth meeting. Councilmembers Zahn and Councilmember Barksdale would like to be able to participate remotely. Is there a motion?
There is, mayor. I move to approve the remote participation of Councilmember Zahn and Councilmember Barksdale during the October tenth regular meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then on to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve that?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So we have two study session items tonight. The next one, the first one is a continuation of our budget conversations. It's a deeper dive into what we were discussing last week with the operating budget and the capital, the CIP plan. So Mr. Miyaki, would you like to introduce?
Thank you, mayor. Councilmembers, I'm gonna turn it over to Tony Call real quickly here in a minute, but that deeper dive is into the areas of public safety, the city's homelessness response, the use of the Federal American Recovery Act, also known as ARPA allocations, as well as new investments in maintaining Bellevue as a safe, clean, and vibrant city. And so I mentioned that Tony Call is here this evening, along with Evan Phillips, and there's a whole cadre of staff here that I'm gonna leave to Tony to bring up to the table as they make their presentations. I'll turn it over to you, Tony.
Thank you very much, City Manager Miyaki. Mayor, deputy mayor, as always, it's good to be with you this evening. Thank you once again for having us. This presentation tonight is information-only, and our agenda this evening is to take a little deeper dive. So on the right-hand side of this slide is the graphic we showed last week that showed all the investments that we're making in the operating budget. And so we're using it as kind of a place to draft an agenda from. So this evening, we'll hear from public safety, the growth and urbanization with American Rescue Plan Act and the Safe and Clean and Vibrant City, and then finally with homelessness. And our order of agenda this evening is public safety will be first. Once that is done, we'll take questions. We'll move into homelessness, American Rescue Plan Act, and Safe, Clean, and Vibrant City, and again, take questions. And through this evening, I have a cadre of people, as City Manager Miyaki mentioned, and we'll start with public safety in just a minute. and we'll start with public safety in just a minute. Here is our budget milestone calendar. You've seen this before. We are currently where the green arrow is. We'll see a public hearing here on November 7th and looking for tentative adoption on November 21st. And the first, next few meetings we've got ahead of us is tonight, you've seen the agenda before. Next Monday, we'll be focusing on utility rates and any other areas that are needed at that time. And then on October 24th, development services rates, Human Services Commission and CBDG, as well as ESI and equity diversity and access, which will round out the bottom portion of that pinwheel. The one you don't see on this list is affordable housing. Also, on October 10th, there is a planned affordable housing presentation, and they'll include some thoughts during that presentation outside of the budget conversation itself on the affordable housing piece that was on the pinwheel. This is the list of actions to adopt. I'll go over these a little bit further, probably around the 10th or the 24th of October as we get through most of the pieces that will allow you to be able to take action on these. There is quite a list. I think in the end, there's 11 or 12 total actions that will happen this year in order to adopt the budget on November 21st. And with that, I will call to the table the public safety folks, starting with Chief Hagan, Chief Shirley, and Assistant Chief Popchak. I will start with Chief Hagan and public safety and some of the investments that we're seeing in public safety. So over to you, Chief Hagan.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, members of council, city manager Miyaki. Excuse me. We are really excited to be moving ahead with Fire Station 10. The advent of Fire Station 10 and the staffing that goes along with it is going to help us address that donut hole we've talked about for so long. It's going to help us with improved response times in that part of town, not just to emergencies that occur at street level, but also up in the high-rise buildings. The project actually went out to bid on September 22nd, and it closes November 3rd. So we're in the process of selecting somebody to help us actually build that facility. The timeline for completion is estimated to be in the 12- to 18-month range. And the budget includes the second half of the 13 FTEs to staff that new fire station. The first half, seven FTEs, happened last year in the current budget that we're in. There are six FTEs programmed in the budget before you for your consideration, so half of the staffing for the new station. It also, this budget includes some of the upfront costs, like the new fire engine, which is actually under construction right now in Wisconsin. We're really excited about that. And the CIP includes funding for the physical construction as well. So the overall goal here is to have the new staff recruited, hired, trained, and actually off probation, completely ready to serve as firefighters, in addition with the tools and equipment and the building so we can bring that really needed capability into the community. And I want to thank you for your support on that. With that, I'd like to yield to Chief Shirley to move ahead with our presentation. Chief?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, and councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you about the police department's plan to meet the challenges of our growing and changing community. There's no denying that Bellevue is a vibrant and increasingly complex metropolitan city. And like the fire department, we are feeling the impacts of growth. There has been a 37% increase in police calls for service in the last decade. Currently, that's about 50,901 calls for service. However, that does not include proactive and self-initiated calls that officers are involved in. That number is estimated to be approximately 70,000 calls for service this year as compared to 2021, where there was about 62,000. And we are responding to those calls with the same number of patrol officers that we have for quite some time. We've also witnessed Bellevue's business boom and our city truly becoming a regional hub, attracting major companies and tens of thousands of new employees. With this rapid growth, we have seen just about a 19% uptick in our overall crime from 2017 to 2021. Additionally, our officers are called upon to staff more than 30 large events throughout the year, with commitments ranging from one to 36 days per event. There is also an increase in risk associated with these large public events. Events such as Snowflake Lane, the Families Fourth, Rock and Roll Marathon, and various protests require extensive intelligence planning and more officers present to ensure safety. The additional officers we are requesting will help ease the toll on these events and take and allow the officers to spend more time in community engagement. We also want to increase our anti-crime operations that we've outlined to the council a few months ago, where teams of highly visible patrol officers, undercover officers, and detectives use real-time data to assess and address crime hotspots across the city. These have been very successful thus far. And finally, these additional officers will complement patrol by responding to 911 calls, engaging in community policing, and making officers more visible to residents, and giving them the ability to spend more time on the calls. I hear from many community members that they'd like to see more patrol officers in their neighborhoods. This will give us the opportunity to be more flexible and to do that. Light rail. With light rail coming to Bellevue and up to 52,000 new daily riders, I strongly believe we need an EastLink transit unit. When light rail arrives, it will regionalize Bellevue like never before. In addition to the daily commuters, people will flock to the light rail whenever there's a large event, say a Mariners game, or Seahawks game, or a concert. Light rail will also provide rapid access to Bellevue for events here, such as the Festival of Arts, the Families Fourth of July, and even protests. We need to be prepared for what that means for Bellevue. We've researched other cities with similar light rail lines, looking at calls for service and criminal activity. Across the comparable cities, the most reported crimes include property crimes like theft, motor vehicle theft, assaults, and even robberies. While we cannot predict what degree we will have to deal with these type of issues, you can rest assured we will experience some impact. We recognize our community is very concerned about a potential uptick in crime with light rail, and the transient unit will go a long way to help alleviate some of those concerns. Light rail requires special training to understand the equipment and how to access each point. The transient unit will be dedicated to patrolling the platforms, parks and rides, and restrooms. They will also be available to immediately respond to issues on and around the train, where patrol officers might be delayed if they are in a different part of the city. Additionally, the unit will be available as a rapid response unit to any large-scale event. The high visibility of officers will not only help reduce crime and prevent crime, but will also help reduce the fear of crime. Finally, the transient unit will serve as liaison between government and non-governmental agencies, such as Sound Transit, social service providers, and the Downtown Business Association and other neighborhood associations that may be impacted by light rail. I will now turn it over to Assistant Chief Andrew Popchak.
Thank you. Every individual in crisis deserves a compassionate and thoughtful response by public servants who care about the person needing help. The community expects this response, and the police department and fire department have been working to improve our capabilities to ensure that the city has the right employees with the right training to make sure this happens every time. We understand that this to work, to happen, the environment must feel safe and be safe for the person in crisis, the community, and the employees doing this essential work. In 2021, we piloted the Community Crisis Assistance Team, CCAT, to determine if this program could meet these requirements. The CCAT pilot paired specifically trained officers with mental health professionals from Bellevue Fire Cares to go into the field to serve those in crisis. It proved highly successful in accomplishing the goals. The individuals contacted by CCAT teams were 33% less likely to be booked into jail or admitted to the hospital. 72% of CCAT responses originated from an emergency call, meaning that CCAT took off a heavy load from patrol. CCAT teams were also able to spend 82% more time per call. Spending this additional time resulted in positive outcomes and high satisfaction rates by both the client and the social service agencies contacted to help them. The CCAT program aligns with the Office of Independent Review Recommendations that call for police to address community concerns regarding interactions with people in crisis. The right team with the right training responding to those in crisis makes a difference. We saw this when we looked at the use of force incidents. Use of force was reduced by 24% when CCAT teams were deployed. It is all about partnership. The CCAT program is a perfect partnership between the Bellevue Police Department and the Bellevue Fire Department, with both working toward the best outcome for the person in crisis. It is about partnerships with community organizations like Congress for the Homeless, Overlake Hospital, and the Sophia Way. It is also about the partnership with those in crisis and their families, whose voices were included in the CCAT evaluation. It's about working as a community to protect and help and make meaningful change in the lives of some of the most vulnerable members of our community. Thank you again. I'll be handing this over to Chief Hagan.
Thank you. As Assistant Chief Popchak briefly described, the desired outcomes for this CCAT program are to provide meaningful response to individuals in our community that we find in crisis, resulting in a reduced use of force, reduced arrests, and to reduce unnecessary ER or emergency room visits. An additional goal is to get individuals in crisis connected to our ongoing case management system, which is really what provides solutions to people, particularly individuals with complex challenges, such as mental health, substance abuse, and/or housing issues. We studied alternate response models. We partnered with advisors that have the academic rigor to provide meaningful results, and we developed a model tailored to our community. We then tested it for four months, and I'm confident that we can deliver on these outcomes and goals. Our partnership, our future success, is really dependent on our partnership with PD. And you may notice there's a CCAT team sitting behind me to my right, so thank you guys for donating your evening to be here. Like our pilot program, CCAT will be staffed by specially-selected police officers with specialized training and with mental health professionals who are all, at a minimum, associate, independent, licensed clinical social workers. I feel that starting with a co-response model and building on the existing strength of our cares program and remaining committed to learning, adapting, and growing is really the right way to go. By following evidence that we gather from the field at large, as well as lessons from our experience, we will be able to develop and improve. We are committed to continuing to evaluate our program as it grows and plan to partner with neighboring jurisdictions to develop shared metrics for success across the region so we can make apples-to-apples comparisons. CCAT benefits our community in a number of ways. It assists individuals in accessing the right services for their circumstances. It releases our first responders to focus on critical life-saving calls. It's aligned with our Bellevue core values of excellent customer service, innovation, and stewardship. And it does have, I think, the effect of elegance, the right help applied by the right resource at the right time, reducing runs for our traditional response units, leaving them ready to respond to fires, heart attacks, strokes, motor vehicle collisions. We also, and thank you for your help on this, have received a big head start from the federal government in the form of a grant for $915,000, which is going to allow us to buy down some of the one-time costs of this program, like the vehicles, the equipment, the radios. I would like to conclude by thanking you, council, for your willingness to lean into our ability to respond more effectively to individuals experiencing a behavioral health crisis. And mayor, at this time, we stand ready to take any direction you may have or questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead, and I'll take questions. I'll start with Councilmember Barksdale, and we'll just go down the dais. Can I, I don't have to tell you this, but just a reminder to myself and others that we'll try to keep our questions and comments to three minutes at a time. Go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. All right. Thank you all for the presentation and update about public safety efforts for the budget. Just had a couple of areas, I think two areas that I really wanted to focus on, and that is for the transit police unit, what sort of conversations have you had with King County? Because right now, they already have a King County Transit, Metro Transit unit, and so just curious about what those conversations have looked like.
Yeah, I'll start. We've had some conversations with them, and while they have a transient unit, they are suffering from staffing shortages as well. And so they've made it clear that their intent would be to assist, but due to staffing shortages, that might not be as readily available as one would think. And so that would leave us, you know, as the first responders, that would really delay their response to any kind of issue that may happen on the transient unit, so.
Do you think you want to add with that, Andrew? We also have specific infrastructure, like a tunnel and elevated rails here in Bellevue that we need officers trained on in order to respond to those as well. So even if King County was unavailable, we need officers trained to do that sort of work in those environments.
I guess my concern here would be that it could create a fragmented rider experience to have multiple law enforcement agencies enforcing on, you know, a regional transit system. So I guess I'm, I know that Sound Transit currently contracts with King County, so in terms of staffing shortages, and they're already trained, right, for Metro, apparently, if they're contracting with Sound Transit. So have we considered contracting with King County Metro Transit?
We have, we have not, but I can tell you regarding your concern as it relates to different law enforcement agencies enforcing different laws, we certainly will continue to work with them to make sure that there's some consistency there in terms of what we're doing and what they're doing. That doesn't mean there won't be a partnership and an ongoing relationship there, obviously.
I guess I'd be interested in, I know this is for follow-up, right, as well? Any follow-up work? I'd be interested in a follow-up of what that might look like as an alternative if we were to contract with King County Metro Transit versus building our own transit unit. Do I have enough time to go to the second one, or should I wait?
Yeah, I'm just going to say, let's make sure that Councilmember Barksdale gets the history of our contract with Sound Transit as well, in terms of emergency services.
Okay, but this, okay, this contract would be with King County?
I realize that, but we have an obligation to provide in our contract with Sound Transit, so I just want to get the history out there.
Cool. Should I go to the second one, or have I?
Yes.
Okay.
Wait a minute. What do you say?
Three seconds more.
Do you want to come back around?
Yeah, that sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmembers Zahn?
Yes, thank you. Appreciate the presentation. I think that we want to make sure that we have, we right-size our budget for the growth that we are seeing and continue to see, and make sure that we are being preventative and having the right resources. So I do have a couple of questions related to that. One is, when you talked about public events and the need for more police to support it, do we get reimbursement of those costs that we incur as part of that? So that's one of my questions for the police department. And then my question for the fire chief is, as we think about light rail coming to the east side and the Transit Patrol from the police department, I'm wondering, because we do have a tunnel through in Bellevue, whether we are adequately staffed from the fire department's standpoint for the kind of responses if we end up with a fire emergency? And what portion of that are we responsible for versus Sound Transit? So I guess those are two kind of questions related to, as we think about our budget, how much of it do we look to our partners as well for helping us with some of that?
Well, to answer your question regarding reimbursement, it depends. So sometimes, many times, we do. The very large-scale events, we certainly try and require that, like the Rock and Roll Marathon, we were certainly reimbursed with that. But that was all hands-on-deck of the police department. It practically took every single officer we had to staff that entire weekend. But yes, we do get reimbursed many times on the very large events, but many of them we do not, right? Protests, other things that we need to be present at, it's just a public safety thing that we're there.
Okay, so that just might be something to keep in mind as we look forward, that as we are funding internally, how we might look to our partners to help with some of that.
Councilmembers on for the question. We have coordinated with Sound Transit and our regional response partners of Mercer Island and Redmond, and worked extensively to work out an arrangement to fund the necessary capability to handle and welcome light rail to our region. The direct answer to your question is, we're not big enough or well-trained enough to handle a big emergency in the tunnel, but with our partners, we are. And our existing training consortium that we have on the east side, we have been able to, uh, get the funding necessary to handle, uh, the training, the specialized equipment, to be able to respond in an emergency at grade on an elevated portion of the line or in the tunnel. And it's involved engineering, it's involved, um, design and all sorts of response and sending members to training. But we're actually, uh, really thankful for our regional partnerships that we were able to leverage into, um, that capability. And as the system becomes more mature and they move to revenue service, the responsibility shifts from them more onto us as a group of first responders. And so we're feeling pretty good about, about our ability to handle what we may need to handle in terms of an emergency response.
So we've been able to, this is great, we've been able to absorb then the training and we have the partnership. So, um, even if the service does start in 2024, you believe that the budget you currently have requested is adequate for the, the resources we need? That's really the question. I just want to make sure that you are asking for what you need.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. First, great presentation, Chief Hagan, Chief Shirley, and Assistant Chief Popchak. Really glad to hear that, uh, this budget really, um, I think greatly improves, greatly increases the budget for public safety, which residents, time after time, tell us is their number-one concern, both from a fire perspective, but also from, uh, from a crime perspective. Residents have seen the increase, and I'm glad this presentation has been so transparent. They've seen the increase in the petty theft or the property crime, uh, the shoplifting. They've noticed that, but they've also noticed the great work that you've done over the last two, two or three months with that emphasis that you've been doing at certain hotspots around the city. That is having a great impact, so, um, kudos to the entire team. I think a transit team is imperative. I love that it's a part of this budget. Chief Shirley, I think you even have some experience dealing with this in your prior background, dealing with, uh, light rail coming to, to, to a new city, and that gives me certainly great comfort knowing that. But as you know, light rail is delayed a little bit potentially, at least coming from Seattle, right? It still might open just on the, on the east side here, uh, back before, you know, back and forth between Bellevue and Redmond. So I'm wondering, why not recruit right away, start going right now? You know how competitive it is out there for, for, for great officers and officers that meet our Bellevue standard. So even though there is a little bit of uncertainty in terms of when it's going to actually open, why not start right now? And I 100% agree that we need our own transit team. I don't want to be waiting on King County, especially when they're understaffed and, you know, things happen, you know, in real time. And to be waiting for another agency, I just don't think, um, is realistic in this sense. So, um, Chief Shirley, please, go ahead.
Definitely, that last part, you know, in my, my previous, uh, experience, the county did have a contract, and they were committed to trying to come, but when something happens, there, there's a 45-minute, hour, hour and a half response time. And the people of Bellevue should not and will not wait that long, right? We will have to step in and handle the situation. That's just the reality of it. And in regards to, uh, starting to recruit for transit unit officers now, we are, right? So the transit unit, the officers will come from within the department, not outside, right? So when we're doing our general recruitment of police officers, once we post, we're gonna do a transit unit, and officers from within the department will apply, get interviewed, and be selected. So we're on it already.
Fantastic, great to hear. And just to go back to a comment by Assistant Chief Papachk, and I've mentioned this once before, so forgive me, but, um, I, I know that one of the metrics that we're tracking for the CCAT is, um, reducing arrests, which, um, I guess relies on the discretion of the officer. But I want to make sure if we're tracking that metric, that we understand that if an arrest is not made, what the outcome is, uh, did they get into, um, mental health or addiction? Or did we help them get on a path to independence, um, through, um, you know, shelter or whatever they need? I just want to make sure, and I know we won't, this is Bellevue, but, you know, the same folks, the repeat offenders is not happening time and time and time again, so I'll let you speak to that. Thank you.
Yeah, it's always about the outcome for the individual and what's the best thing for them. That's the difference about this. In the future, we're glad to come back and sit down and discuss the specifics of how the program will come up at a future point in time.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I have, um, first of all, I just wanted to tell you what a fan I am of the CCAT team, and I just appreciate the work that you've done and the, the results, the data I'm looking at. Looks very promising, and I, of course, I was watching it when it was just a fire team's service, and it was super helpful and really did diminish the 911 calls and serve the community in a great way. So I'm very interested in how it is expanding to the police work as well. So I hear from the community that there's a big benefit in having separate cars for a CCAT team, and I wonder if you could speak to that? And my other question is, um, what has been the impact of 811? Is that the right number? That's for crisis? Oh, sorry. Good thing I'm not trying to call it. 988 on, um, our crisis response calls? When people call that number as opposed to 911?
So regarding the separate vehicles, separate cars, uh, mental health worker, police officer in separate vehicles, yeah, there, there are some models that do that, and I can say this, there probably some challenges with it as it relates to if both of them get a call, they also may get there first anyway, right? Or vice versa, right? And, and what will end up happening is, I would suspect the mental health worker would wait and stage until the officer got there, and then they would go in as a partner just to make sure it was safe. And so I know some models do the separate cars, and I'm not sure what the specific reason is for that. And maybe it's just to kind of bifurcate the police and the mental health worker. And, and so that's certainly doable, right? But if they're a team, one's gonna get there before the other anyway, and typically they're gonna have to wait until the other gets there, and then they go in together to make sure it's safe.
I guess, uh, one of the thoughts is that if it's no longer needed, necessary to have a police officer there, the police officer could then leave and leave the, um, the crisis workers.
Gotcha, okay.
So, anyway, I'd like if we could look into the, the pros and cons of that, if we, and the impact that might have on the budget. And then, um, the impact of 988, I don't know if your CCAT program was going when that was implemented, actually. So you may not have an answer for that.
It was not, not at that time.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Robertson?
Thank you. Um, so I'm very supportive of all of the programs that were outlined tonight on this segment of the budget. I have a couple of questions. The, I know we're adding new positions to BPD. How many are we adding, and what is the split between commissioned officer and non-commissioned officers?
So in this particular budget, it's a total of 21. And 19 of those are commissioned officers, and two of those are our non-commissioned staff, support staff.
Great, and how is that number? And I'm glad we're growing the Police Department. I think we needed to. As our city is growing, getting more complex, we have to grow our Police Department to make sure that we keep the level of service up. I'm just wondering how this, um, number of positions is or is not consistent with the staffing study that we did? Because there was an algorithm that we purchased with that staffing study that kind of forecasted how many positions we would need of what type. Is this like dead-on? Is it below? Is it a little above? Do you know?
Yeah, and I remember that staffing study in 2018. It's, it's a bit different, uh, but we still use some of the same metrics to get there. And so some of the people that were here during that study are no longer here to repeat the study. And so what we did is took information from the study, and then we kind of did a realignment, uh, review of the organization, kind of where our resources were, how much personnel we had, and where were their gaps? And, and were there any places we could move people around, right? But the whole idea of how do we keep the city safe? We have downtown, I mean, 33-square-mile city. And so we've kind of come together with, uh, different units that we thought we would need to make sure the city is safe, such as, uh, the transit unit, uh, and the alike, and, uh, and took that into consideration with workload analysis, uh, time off, uh, for the officers and the level of service this community expects, right? In terms of being able to get there and, and handle the calls fully. And so we took all that into consideration, and that's kind of how we came to the number that we need in terms of commissioned officers during this budget. And I think it's pretty accurate. And as it relates to the 2018 study, it uses some of the same metrics and, and quite honestly, the number in terms of where it says patrol, then they projected it for 2022 with light rail and all these other things. It's kind of close to that, right? So, do you want to add something, Andrew?
The other piece that, uh, did not come into that is, when you look at our ability to use technology today compared to then as well, being able to have a dashboard where we can have 24-hour-old data to redeploy officers. And if you look at a balanced time, a proactive policing used to be, officer sits in the street corner, waits for the car to drive by, or does speed enforcement, or does contacts of individuals. Now we're redirecting those officers to do emphasis at high-crime locations. We're doing, I don't know if you saw the Factoria Boulevard, uh, where we had officers work specific zones where we know there's issues or concerns. That's something that wasn't taken into the study like that. You also have the growth of, uh, different events that are happening in the city. And that's where, by taking the, the core data that came out of the study itself, but then looking at those changes in the environment, that that's where we're looking at what we're at today as far as numbers and the needs of the city itself.
Great, so it was a lens, but not the entire lens. Perfect.
Correct.
And then just on the transit unit, um, I just wanted to say I really support that. I'm on the Regional Transit Committee for King County, and we have talked at that committee about, um, emphasis and transit police, and this is Metro, I know this is Sound Transit. And there is just not, there are not enough people spread across a very large and growing system. And if something goes down, it's gonna be Bellevue Police that handles it anyway. So we may as well staff up for it because it's in our lab, right? If it's in our jurisdiction, it's in our lab. And so, um, I'm very, very supportive of that. I'd like to see, um, make sure that in addition to the light rail stations, we are keeping our eye, that unit, uh, and if you can speak to this, that'd be great, keep its eye on some of the major, um, bus stations as well, like the Downtown Transit Center. There's not a light rail station there, it's a block away. But it's a, it's a high-density location as far as people, where people are coming and going, and there, that's where you need to make sure that we keep our eyes on. So will we be, will this transit unit also be looking at, um, for example, the Downtown Transit Station?
We will be flexible.
Okay, because if it's in Bellevue, it's our problem anyway, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Good, good to hear it. Thank you so much for the presentation, gentlemen. Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, just a few things, uh, excuse me. A few things on this to follow up. I think there's good conversations, and one of the things I want to, um, lead off with is, uh, Chief, I, I really appreciate what you said, what you said earlier, and what you said in, in some written materials and all this. And I think we need to keep this in context. This is not something by ourselves that we're doing, uh, as if, um, you know, we're just refurbishing, putting more people out there. This is a whole game changer going on out there. We're changing from policing and, uh, care and Medicare and all, Medicare, uh, medical care and all, in a different way. And I think you're, you've talked about that, and I'm very impressed with that, that, that you and your staff and the Fire Department as well. Fire Department is doing, was talking to somebody about, you know, back in the days of the first, uh, TV shows, and, and they brought in, uh, you know, uh, medical people, and it's like, wow, why aren't they doing, doing fires? Nowadays, that's a big part of it. It's really more, you've gotten more into working together, which is good. What I'm concerned about, and what I like about is you say we need to be learning, adapting, and growing. So what concerns me is, it's easy to get into this, and right now, we need to put this in place, but not put it in place in something that is concrete, that we get here a year from now and say, oh, well, we've already got this thing going, but is it working? Or couldn't it be better? And I think that's, that's what we, all of us, us, the staff, the departments, can work together on, and working, and we're not on an island. I mean, yes, what happens in Bellevue, we take care of it, but a lot of times it's much more complex than that, and you know that. Because I read all the time about more than one Police Department going to a place to help on things. So what I would like to see, and I, I understand we have to go in steps and all, and, and the CCAT seems to have, um, good, good way to go. I think there have been conversations about what the, that we don't really know all about. It was a fairly short time period to look at something that may last us for, you know, decades. So I'm, I'm heartened by the, the whole, uh, concept and the approach you're taking. It's just, I hope we don't get locked into, well, we gotta put something in place, and this is it. Because I think there's a, we're learning a lot more in terms of going to, uh, how do we deal with people who have mental problems? And I've seen personally one in, in, uh, Factoria one time where there was a guy out there, obviously stoned, and he was walking around, and there were five police officers standing around, kind of, well, what are we gonna do with this guy? Kind of thing. And fortunately, he didn't, you know, freak out with the police and do something. So it's, it's much more complicated than we kind of talk about. And I think you know that, and that's what's great. So what I'm looking at is, and I'll support us moving forward, but I do want us to continue to be, let's be the best we can be, not just pretty good, do a program, and then we're, we're on it. And I think we have the capacity to do that, and that's what I'd like to see.
Councilmember Stokes, I appreciate your point, and I'm gonna ask the City Manager to describe the, how this is an evolving program that we're earmarking for funding.
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, Councilmembers, yes, you know, this is, you know, we, we have come to council before with CCAT, and albeit it was a few months ago. There's been a lot of community conversations happening with, with CCAT. But for, as we move forward for the budget, we are looking for at least the resources to move forward with CCAT. What the program looks like ultimately will be, uh, further conversations with the Council and the staff.
And the community.
And the community, correct.
Yeah, exactly.
So is that, I mean, you know.
We're on kind of the same.
Yeah, I'd like to add that, and I'm sure the Chief would like to weigh in too. It, it's definitely our commitment to, um, to expand the program as it relates to best practices and, and learning and, and connecting with our regional partners to find out what best works. This is a great start, but I agree with you, this is not necessarily the end-all, be-all. And so we're very, very open to, to learning, adjusting along the way.
Right, thank you.
Thanks, Chief. And, uh, Councilmember Stokes, I hear that, I understand it, and I'd like to echo the pledge that Chief Shirley just made, that we are committed to being guided from our experience, to engaging in regional partnerships, to identifying metrics that multiple programs can use together, and, and taking some lessons from what we do experience, which, which we're, uh, I think we can stand behind that commitment. I hear what you're saying. Thank you.
And I'd like to surprise the rest of the world. Thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. Well, one of the reasons that I've lived in Bellevue for 50-some years because of you guys, our public safety. And people continue to come here, as we know. So you really are putting, taking a big punch for the budget to us. You're bringing the first team, so, thank you. You know, we, we trust, I trust our Police Department. We trust our City Manager to hire the right people to do the right job. And we have high expectations, as I mentioned. And so I'm not gonna second-guess you and do the work for you. I'm not the pro, you guys are. And I think, you know, both of you are so even relatively new, but I think you've proven yourself so far. You know, we've seen what you have done, like the CCAT program, and you're willing to listen to us, listen to the public. And I think we are managing still, we're probably the most safest city in the region. So I, I really feel very confident. But I do have some questions. One is, we need to do a lot of things, like this, uh, light rail, uh, team, right? I think it's important, easily. I agree. I trust our police, but I'm not sure if I trust, not even trusting, but it's probably physically impossible to have other people to police in our own city for all the logistics you mentioned. You know more than I do. So I think we still can do it, so we think. So I think we still can do it, so we think, I think we need to beef up our public safety people, like you are doing, equipment, whatnot. So I'm really very supportive of all the things that you're talking about, you're recommending, you know, the social program and mental health. We need to have money to do it. My only question is, these things are responsibility for all of us in the region, the Sound Transit Team. You know, who pays for it? That's my question. I know we have our arrangement, agreement, like the mayor mentioned, but is there something casting concrete? I mean, they're bringing, the region is bringing people here, it's coming to us and we should be responsible, but first of all, to our own community to make it safe. And we have to do it ourselves because you guys can do the job. However, I think there's a responsibility for other people, such as Sound Transit. I don't know, I'm just suggesting it. We should be always looking at other opportunities, other ways, you know, maybe there's a way, maybe we can think about it, Mayor, how can we negotiate them to pay for this expense, right? We're not just going to be stuck by it, because help us all, all of us, it's regional, public safety is regional, it's not just Bellevue. If we do good, we do it right, well, we need to make sure it's done and everybody has to pay for it. So I like to propose that. You can answer that or you can answer that later, or you can think about it. Part of it, I think, is City Council's responsibility, probably.
Just one second? I'm just going to say that we can put our questions in a memory bank and answers, you can have answers that we can all look at, including the public, there'll be a public record, so.
Thank you.
You don't have to answer anything tonight.
Thank you. That's good. So let's make this quick, maybe I have a few minutes left. So, one other thing is that, you know, the Chief doesn't know why the separate car and whether, we, you don't see the team, so maybe we need to find out more, have some discussion. And if we believe it works, which we need to know, so we can talk about budget provision. And so, I feel that it's great that your budget proposal covers all the important things. We trust you, we deliver you as professionals to figure out what's necessary. The question is, how can we help you? Whether it be directly providing the budget, you know, by the citizen of Bellevue, or whether we can use other partnership, leverage, whatnot, you know, to make it work. So, I'm not going to give all the details, but, you know, you know the details. We trust you, we hope that you can continue. And that's why we've asked good, I appreciate the council's questions, because, you know, the matrix and all, that's important. And if you don't bring it back to us, you don't satisfy us, the City Managers are going to talk to you, right? So, but right now, at this moment, you are what we've got and you're the right people. Thank you.
Mayor, if you would allow me to address Councilmember Lee's question, it will also allow me to jump back and address Councilmember Zahn's question from earlier. And when I did that, I was remiss in not mentioning that this has been a multi-year effort to prepare for the arrival of light rail in our region and contemplate what might go wrong in terms of security, man-made events, earthquake, and then develop a capability to respond. And we had a great partnership with our Transportation Department, with our Development Services, with our Police Department and our Legal Department, to get all the documentation in place and the funding and the regional documents that I'm sure you guys weighed in on to get these ILAs together. And so, to address Councilmember Lee's question, it really is a blend of funding on who pays for it. We have had funding from Sound Transit that has allowed us to, for example, buy new rescue tools that are operated by batteries instead of cords and hydraulic fluid. We've leveraged some of our grants that we participate in to allow us to do heavy rescue training in Seattle and at national training centers as well. And then we've spent some general fund dollars as well. So we've really been able to leverage multiple sources to get ready when the system goes to revenue service and we inherit that response, responsibility. And, you know, we've partnered with PD on contemplating what could happen on our system and in our tunnel and how do we want to be configured to respond to it. So thank you for the chance to circle back on that.
Can I answer quickly? I just want to say that, don't stop there. Right? I mean, this library is going to affect all of us and Sound Transit has got $100 billion. So, go talk to us and we can work on it. We need your suggestion, ideas, what you've done, so we can all work together.
So he's looking for regional, more regional funding opportunities so we can get back to him on that.
Thank you.
So, Councilmember Barstow, back to you.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So, I guess I just want to start by saying I do appreciate the work of the CCAT team and the program. As I've shared with you before, I am interested in sort of how we evaluate from a regional perspective, so I appreciate it here and the interest in that, to be able to compare apples to apples and be able to evolve the program, so really appreciate that. My question is, do we have money in the budget currently for that sort of regional collaboration? For, so for example, any independent evaluation that might need to take place, and I imagine that we would need to contribute funds as well to any sort of program, any sort of regional effort. So just, and I'll just go through my questions first, I guess, and then if you could respond. So the second one is, for the pilot, we ran two treatments, I guess you could say, right? That was police only and then police with the social worker, I think. One that wasn't considered, I guess, or implemented, was just having the mental health professional go alone. Maybe it was considered, I know that there was the comment about safety. I would be interested in what it would take to, in terms of the budget, any funding possibility to hire a mental health professional who is hired, with that understanding that they would respond, similar to how I think our homelessness outreach coordinator maybe has that understanding. I'm not sure if that's how that works too. Or contract, I looked up, it looks like DESC also provides crisis response, and that would be similar to the, I think, Kahoots model, where it's a non-governmental group that responds to behavioral health calls. And kind of piggybacking on that, in terms of understanding what percentage of calls could be MHP-only, mental health professional only, or non-police involvement, there's an organization called Law Enforcement Action Partnership that will conduct that analysis in partnership with, say, Norcom to evaluate our calls. I'd be interested in what it would, whether there's, what the pros and cons are of being able to contract that with that company. I think it runs about, from what I understand, thirty to forty thousand dollars to do the analysis, to understand to what extent we might be able to have an MHP-only approach in addition to CCAT.
Okay, so.
I'm happy to try and jump in. Councilmember Barstow, were you, was your first question, do we have money in the budget to pay for an evaluative service?
To, as part of a regional collaboration, right? If there's any money that we have to put in as part of the regional collaboration for evaluating, to have this common evaluation framework and the evaluation itself, if we have money. I just wanted to make sure that we.
Right. If I could start with a partial answer.
Okay.
Which is, we do participate in the Mobile Integrated Healthcare Network, which is all the programs on this, in this area, coordinating, working towards some of the goals we talked about. I don't believe it specifically is the evaluative criteria that you are discussing. So, if you would permit me, I'd like to do some homework on that and circle back with you with a meaningful answer on our ability to do that, unless, you know, you'd like to weigh in.
Could I just ask, Councilmember Barstow, are you referencing the county's recent announcement about the crisis centers and the staffing and services that will be done in those?
Not necessarily. It's, you know, each of the cities, you know, we have our CCAT program, other cities will have their programs, we're looking to converge on, based on best practices. And so wanting to be able to identify and work with other cities to determine what those criteria are that allow us, I mean, those metrics are, that allow us to compare the different programs and identify best practices.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Barstow, if I could take just a moment and I can tell you a little bit more about the budget side of that. So, I would say that, yes, we would have money budgeted within the city's budget to accommodate some sort of a regional evaluation. As it would get developed, I think we'd have a better size of size and scope of what that might look like. And I think at that point, we'd be able to give you a better answer. But I would suggest that if a regional consortium wanted to come forward and we wanted to figure out how we could do some sort of a broad evaluation and everybody participated, I would think we'd be able to find a solution to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Sir, was your second question related to the, could we identify the percentage of calls that we could send just a mental health professional on?
That's correct. If we had the budget to be able to have that analysis done by this group that will do that, it's the law enforcement action. I don't know if you would have the answer today, but.
Okay.
As a follow-up item.
Yeah.
We'd have to come back with that, Councilmember Barstow.
Sounds good. And then, one other, I guess, last question here, for the Body worn camera program, does the budget include cost to make appropriately redacted privacy videos available to the public when there are specific instances where that is appropriate?
I could speak to that, if that's okay? Yes, it does include the staffing necessary in records and in public disclosure that would allow for the redaction. It also includes an additional attorney and, I want to say a paralegal, and that might be the wrong terminology, that would also assist in that work. So, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I see you wanting to say a question. Okay, so we'll go down with Councilmembers on.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just, if I didn't say it before, I really do appreciate the holistic view of safety and public safety that we have in this budget and the work that we do. I was on the body worn cameras, actually, my question was, is it already been implemented? Because, and I'll just ask my questions first, same, because I couldn't really tell with the 1.4 million budget whether we have actually already rolled it out and this is the continuation of during the next two years. And then, on the crime hotspots, I really appreciate hearing and understanding that we're using technology and data to be able to have that targeted piece. And I would say what I really appreciate is, not only are you looking at targeting property crimes, but, you know, speeding on our streets, because we are seeing more incidents from speeding, distracted driving. What I saw recently was even though Waze actually identified that you were having patrols, we still managed to have, I think, what is it, thirty-four people that were speeding. So I do want to make sure that we have, you know, adequate resources to really do that, to make sure that people know that, you know, we really want to have the kind of behavior that keeps everybody safe, and it's both in terms of property crimes as well as from speeding and vision zero. And to that end, I'm curious about, you know, as we have seen increases in opioid and fentanyl and human trafficking, is there increases in the budget for the investigative team as well, that, you know, we, I think we've done just an amazing job of being able to investigate and get to the bottom of, you know, these, being able to bust, you know, opioid and various things. I'm just curious about whether the increases include more investigative piece. And then lastly, my last question is, in the CCAT, it said five mental health professionals plus five specially trained police, so I was a little confused about, because with our CARES program, they are interns from the MSW that, I think last time I heard that they were not part of our paid staff, because it's, they're part of the, their training hours. And so are these five mental health professionals in addition to CARES or part of CARES, but we're pivoting to more of a paid model? I was a little bit confused about that. And then, is that accounting for 24/7? Because I understand in the original pilot, it was only Monday through Friday, eight to five. So those were my questions.
Thank you, Councilmembers on. I know I could answer at least part of that. I'll save the hours of the day for you, Chief. But it's a bit confusing. And Councilmember Zahn, you're exactly right. It is in addition to the CARES program, it is growth. And the budget provides for five mental health professionals that would pair with a specially-trained and selected police officer. And those five pairs would be exactly like the ones you see sitting behind me. And we would, we would go on the calls for service and then where appropriate, we would refer those individuals in our community that are needing help into our ongoing case management program. And that's where we use the student help, right? We have anywhere from a dozen to a dozen and a half students, they're Masters of Social Work students, from seven to ten universities and colleges, and they work under the tutelage of a qualified supervisor. They arrive to us needing experience and then we pair them with people in our community that need help. And so we would be growing the size of our student base to help with that ongoing case management, if that gets at the heart of your question.
But that's the case management after the five mental health professionals would be paid, though?
The five mental health professionals are licensed professional people that would be full-time employees of the city of Bellevue.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yep. And then the case management work is handled by the students.
Okay. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
So.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Keep going.
So the schedule for this, with the five team model, which is the one officer, one MHP teamed up, would provide us coverage, in essence, from six in the morning until 2:00 AM the next morning, as well as provide coverage, a overlap shift for, for example, if we know Tuesday through Friday that there's more calls, we need to look at the data, since a big piece of this is looking at the data analysis of when the calls are coming in, either a heavier, so you'd actually have three teams working a certain hour, or two teams working a certain hour, or it could be used for coverage on multiple days overnight if we see that's where the call load is. So that gives us a guaranteed coverage of 6:00 AM till 2:00 AM the next day, but ability to have that extra team be flexible where we fill them in at.
And regarding investigative resources, we do have the resources as it relates to investigations. And the Body worn camera program has not been implemented yet.
When do we expect it to be in place?
Well, it's still in contract negotiations with the respective unions, so I don't have an exact.
Soon. We hope soon.
Soon. Hopefully, very soon.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Deputy Newmeyer.
Thank you, Mayor. It's kind of interesting, you know, we had a very successful CCAT pilot and now we're going to start making changes on the fly here. You know, we believe in constantly improving, I think City Manager Miyaki does it across all departments, where we're always looking at best practices, where we're always looking at what we can learn from regionally. But cities have interests, and our interests are to maintain Bellevue and maintain our standards. So I'm all for regionalism and I'm all for learning best practices from other cities, other regions, other counties, et cetera, but only when it aligns with our interests and aligns to our standards. So I just want to make that clear. And another thing was that, one of the outcomes, if I remember correctly, and again, Assistant Chief Popchak, you may have said this when you presented to us, but one of the outcomes from the pilot was that, in a lot of cases, the individual that we were approaching felt more comfortable talking to an officer than they did with whoever else was, might have been riding along that day, a mental health professional or CARES professional, et cetera. Do I have that, do I remember that correctly? Do you remember that presentation?
Yes, so.
Okay.
When you dealt with individuals, sometimes they would bond with the officer, sometimes there was a pre-existing relationship with the officer.
Yeah.
Sometimes it was bond with the MHP. It was what's the best outcome, the best relationship, the person we're dealing with at.
And, thank you. And I think we need to tread very, very lightly when we talk about leaving either CARES or a mental health professional alone without the support of an officer. There is example after example of things going wrong, unfortunately. And sometimes, you know, it may seem everything's under control, but unfortunately, with some in our community, and my heart just goes out to them, when they're dealing with some real mental health challenges, you don't know what could happen. And unless they are skilled at self-defense or they have a weapon with them, I would tread very carefully going down that path. I don't think that's the path that Bellevue wants to go down. Thank you.
I'm just going to underscore what we discussed and let's look at best practices, let's look at how we can have the best program available, because we have the best people to implement it. Okay, Councilmember Robertson.
I agree with the mayor and the deputy mayor. I think our pilot was very successful. I know that we'll continue to look at best practices. Our CARES program was a pilot and it had such good success and best practices that the last. the last Medic One levy funded it for all of King County. So that is the kind of work Bellevue's doing, that's the kind of work the CCAT is doing, and I am supportive to continue moving ahead. Thank you.
Councilmember Stokes.
Well, I think, I think we've covered all those things. I do, I just have differences in approach in terms of, um... Doing something that somehow or other, we have unique circumstances and we need to concentrate on that and not work with others. And I, I, I think we're going down a wrong path in that. What I'm suggesting is that, that we, and again, a lot of police professionals here and other places have talked about how we moved to another matter, another way to go. And while there are a lot of people who, who need somebody or the police are best there, but there is a real factor of people who are mentally, you know, frightened, really freaked out having a police officer come and, and for, it's a very complicated thing. So we can't just say that one piece is the only way to go and this is the only way to go. What I'm saying is it will evolve. We are very, very good. There are other cities around us who are very, very good and looking at it different ways. So this is a, you can't lock something in, in, you know, in, in, freeze it in something. And, and this is what I've been most pleased is both our police department, fire department, and people working on this outside of the two groups are really looking at this with a more, much more outward looking, inward looking, working together and looking at where do we go in the future and not say, hey, we got the best thing in the world since sliced bread and we're going to keep it that way. Bellevue is great, but I think we have the possibility to do something really good. We can do good stuff, or we can do really good stuff. And we could do it in a way that doesn't hurt people, that helps people. And I think that's where we're going. So I just don't want to get locked into the Bellevue way is the only way to do it. And the Redmond way is not the only way to do it, or the Kirkland way, or the Kent way, or Auburn. And all of these cities are as serious as we are about this and they're working on it and they're doing some different things. So we're in a period of time where we have the opportunity to really do something great or just do something very good, be proud of ourselves, but not really addressing the opportunity we have. And I, I believe completely, you've got four people and you count because you're all part of this putting, working together, sitting here in front of us who can do an amazing job. And that's what I think we need to support. And it's not going to be, okay, we've got, we've got it baked, let's go here. So I think we can get this put in place. As we said, as we said, it's not, it's not all written in stone. These dollars aren't in, you know, with different colors for something that's going to happen now. It's a concept. We're putting things in place and we have a plan to go on. But things move. Progress is made slowly and hard, but it, you, you don't progress if you don't keep going. So I'm very pleased with the, with it. I'll be voting for the package. I think it's good, but I just, I just want us to fulfill the opportunities and the promise that we, I see before us. And I really appreciate the work you're doing.
Thank you, Councilmember Stokes. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I said that I completely trust you guys, but don't take it as this. I have some question too. And what, you know, I completely agree with the deputy mayor. And he said for me that, you know, we have rather regional, you know, issues, but we have to make sure, you know, whatever we practice, we have to align with Bellevue's interests. The reason is, you know, we, I've lived in Bellevue for 50 some years and, but people have lived in Bellevue for a long time. And we have our practice, we have our police department so well respected. It's because we've done all the things, Councilmember, to Stoke mentioned, we are flexible. We know how to use best ways. We know how to change. We don't lock our mind up. We do things. And you guys are proof of that, right? If you are not, I don't think the city manager would hire you. We all just need a whole bunch of robots sitting here. No, you are not. Okay, so that's, that's aside. I think it's, it's, you know, I repeat in my confidence. But I do have a question, a couple of questions. One is, you talk about drug, mental health, and what are we doing in, maybe you can describe it. I believe you are doing it, you're doing well, but specifically for combating violence and hate crime. The reason I'm asking is, you know, council gave you policies. This is something that we can tell you. That's how I want to be involved, not to tell you how to do it, but that's our policy. A council policy, we give you directions. So I want to know what you see as policy that you're following, that are coming up with programs to combat violence and hate crime. Specifically, you know, CCAT is one of the mental health situation, maybe, you know, and the other one is school. You know, we have school resource offices and we went through that in the last couple of years, but confusion. And the school is working very hard on how to do school safety. So I want to know. And I think this is a policy, we say, we want to make sure it's safe. We want to make sure what we can do, right? So families, our community. So I want to know maybe specifically what you're doing and how this is addressed in the budget that's going to do those things. Is it hiring officers or maybe not, working with others, maybe not? How about library, whatever it is? That's what I want to know. So that's the big question. Okay. And then there's a small question at the end. We talk about programs, the police part of the budget that's going to Tony as well. There's a half marathon event, we just have window for lots of people coming. And there's a lot of P, P's officers. I, I heard that every police officer on the street, it's a good thing, they bring a lot of revenues. At the same time, I heard also, there's a Ukrainian festival, 15,000 people showed up at crossroads. And, you know, I don't know what is, how do we serve these two different communities? Do we have to pay for it? What's our financial burden? You mentioned, Chief, that we recoup some of the money, but how do we do that? Uh, you know, I don't know, but I heard from the Ukrainian event, they will send a bill for $10,000, you know, to me, you know?
That was a mistake.
Oh, okay. Well, that's a question. Thank you. We, we don't know anything about it. Okay, it's a mistake, that's good. So I, but it should be policy. If it's a community event, it's not for profit event, it's not to generate, you know, 15 million income. How do we handle those situations?
So let's come back and give Councilmember Lee answers on what the policies are for public events and community events and the police presence.
Thank you.
So we are only a portion, portion of the way through our budget presentation. So we're going to take a break and we're going to come back at 10 after and we will resume the next section. And any other questions you have on the public safety section, please give them to staff and staff will put them in a place where we can all see them and we can get answers.
Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Resume our budget conversation. We are still on our first study session item and I'm going to hand it back to Tony Call.
Thank you, Mayor.
Forum Plus.
So the next section of the evening has three components to it. Homelessness and Beyond the Single is here to address the homelessness investments that you find in the 23, 24 preliminary budget. Then we'll move into the American Rescue Plan Act and we have Tony Sparza and Jesse Canato here to talk a little bit about the funding that will be budgeted in the preliminary budget. And then finally, we have an initiative regarding the Clean City Initiative and Nathan McCollman, I suspect from sitting from the dais over there, will give us the last little piece on that. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Bianca.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. So homelessness has been identified as a high priority by the council and in community feedback. It's a complex issue. There's no one solution and the city invests across a spectrum of programs and services in support of making homelessness rare, brief and one time if it occurs, and to help transition individuals back to stable housing as quickly as possible. The homelessness outreach program is located in the city manager's office and helps to coordinate cross-departmental response, including encampment resolution, providing direct outreach services and collaborating with east side and regional partners. There are three key areas for investment, facilities, so places for people to stay and for people to live, enforcement of city codes with an emphasis on helping unhoused folks get the support they need. This would include vehicle residency and encampment response as particular areas of focus, and direct services that help folks exit homelessness and find stable housing. So the proposed budget invests in each of these areas and there are items on this slide with the green highlight that indicate investments specifically included in the homelessness outreach program budget while others are reflected elsewhere in the budget proposal. So the specific investments in homelessness response included in this budget provide for extending an outreach staff position to maintain our high level of response to community members, as well as funding to address high priority concerns, including vehicle residences and encampment resolution in particular. Also, council had directed staff to include budget for the safe parking pilot program along with the city budget. And this does in fact do that as requested. This is a pilot program that would be on city-owned property as well as offering additional tools for religious organizations who choose to host safe parking on their own properties as well. And we'll be returning to the council in the next couple of months for further discussion on the details of that program prior to launch next year. The third component on this slide is gap funding that will help ensure that the permanent men's shelter and other providers across the community are able to provide critical services, including outreach and housing navigation to help our unhoused residents. So these funds complement our ongoing outreach program and will allow the organization to respond effectively to evolving community needs.
And Mayor, we'll continue on to the next couple of items and we'll come back for questions. So the next section is the American Rescue Plan Act and I'll give a quick summary of where we've been and then turn the remote control over to Tony Sparza. So overall, the city received $20 million in American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA. Of that $20 million, the first initial 8 million was appropriated by the council back in 2021. At that time, it was for housing stability, specifically rental assistance and small business recovery, also focusing somewhat on small business recovery as well as rental assistance for small businesses. The, the, the piece about the ARPA money that is very important is this is certainly one-time money. It must be incurred or basically under contract by December 31st, 2024, and the funds must leave the city by December 31st, 2026. So those are the timelines that we're working under. In order to meet those timelines, this budget, the 23, 24 preliminary budget, needs to appropriate the remaining $12 million. That $12 million is split into two buckets and I will turn the, the mic over to Tony here in just a minute. $10 million to human services and $2 million to continued small business recovery. And with that, I will pass it to Tony.
Thanks so much. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, councilmembers. Good to be with you this evening. So in speaking about critical human services, we've reported to you, and I know you've observed as well, that the impacts of the pandemic on our low and moderate income residents have continued to lead to an unprecedented demand for human services in our community. While we know that this level of demand is clearly tied to the pandemic, it's yet to be determined what that demand will be in a potential post-pandemic world, whatever that may be. On October the 24th, human services staff will be bringing back the Human Services Commission's recommendations for funding allocations from three sources. That's the Human Services Fund, Community Development Block Grant Funds, and Housing Stability Program Funds, previously known as 1590. In looking at those funding availabilities and recommendations that will be coming to you, we also gathered data from our 21, 22 Human Services Needs Update. We've continued to gain input from agencies and residents and we've also factored in regional resources that might be available to our, to our residents. With that data, we've identified what are the most critical areas of need for human services funding. They are the areas that are listed on the screen. These are the areas most in need of funding to address resident health and stability. With the $10 million that is being recommended to be allocated to human services, I'm going to provide you a little bit of background of how the funds were used that were already allocated and how that leads to our current recommendations. As Tony Call mentioned, council previously allocated $7 million in ARPA funding in 2021, specifically to address resident housing stability, including eviction and foreclosure prevention for low and moderate income households impacted by the pandemic. Those funds are nearly depleted. Just to give some context, over the past six months, approximately $800,000 per month has been distributed to the community for housing stability, including various funding sources, including ARPA. And at this pace, approximately 580 residents or 200 households per month have been receiving support. It's unclear what the distribution rate for funds will be over the next few months. So we can't use that necessarily as a de facto number of how many residents or households would be served, but it does give us an idea of the demand that is being experienced in the community. To address this ongoing need right now, given that funds are nearly depleted, staff are recommending that 2.4 million be immediately allocated to ensure that there's a funding available through the end of 2022 to respond to the needs of residents to maintain their housing. This critical time for allocation will prevent households from becoming homeless as we enter the cold weather season and the holidays. The remainder of that 10 million will be applied to human services in the 23, 24 biennium in a number of ways. We again, will be taking some money off the top, 2.6 million to address housing stability to continue to ensure there's a sustained amount of funding there. Approximately 1.5 million will go to shelter operations for our critical 24/7 shelters to make sure their basic shelter operations can continue. Some will be set aside for staffing, approximately 300,000 to maintain this program, and the remaining 3 million will be allocated via an RFP process for each of the critical needs that we identified on that prior slide. We are recommending the RFP process for a number of reasons. The last applications we received for our general fund were in March. And as you all can imagine, human services are rapidly evolving in the community and we want to make sure we are hearing from the agencies what the most critical and current need is. They will have heard back from other funders by then and will know where their gaps are based on their applications to other funders at that time. In addition, we are seeing agencies continue to emerge in the community and our current agencies are continuing to develop new services. So we want to make sure that any agency that may have evolved since March of 2022 is still able to apply if they begin to offer a new service in one of these areas. In addition, this will give the opportunity for the Human Services Commission to weigh in on those applications with their really important voice to the council. And so those recommendations would come back to you as well. The amount for each of the RFPs is being determined by the gap in current requests to current funds as available, just to give us a rough order of magnitude of how to distribute those RFPs into the community. And with that, I'll pass it over to Jesse Canato.
Thank you, Tony. Good evening, members of council. With regards to small business recovery, as the council knows, for the last two and a half years, the city has been deeply engaged with our business community, everyone from our small first-time mom and pop shops up to our major global employers. We have seen the best results yet in the business survey, lots of continuing confidence in Bellevue. As we have engaged with the business survey, through our business retention meetings and through third-party data analysis, we have seen that largely our professional services companies, our large tech employers are largely doing well, though their absence continues to be noted, particularly in the downtown and other office-heavy neighborhoods of Bellevue. And that is the part that, that is causing the most stress on our small business community, particularly our small independent food and food restaurants and retailers that note the continuing absence of daytime workers. They're also struggling with significant staff turnover as the economy has continued to provide challenges, great opportunities in a tight labor market, causing a lot of staff turnover. And in economic development, we would like to talk about two, two ways you can help businesses do well. You either lower their operating costs or you increase their operating revenues. The city has done a commendable job of keeping costs very low for businesses operating here in Bellevue. And there are still opportunities to grow operating revenues for our small businesses. So with that, we would like to recommend that the city use the $2 million to help both sides of that equation, both with helping businesses improve their productivity and thereby lowering their operating costs and also helping them find ways to add additional customers in the changing market, thereby helping increase their operating revenues. Funds allocated would help support temporary programs over the next two to four years that will help improve businesses productivity, that might be business advising to help them adapt to new business practices or help them transition to more productive software. Other areas like helping them improve customer acquisition, which might be things like working with the old Bellevue Merchants Association on additional marketing for the neighborhood or additional events that bring in new customers to patronize their businesses. It could be improving employee training and retention through partnerships with Bellevue College or other organizations that help with apprenticeships, internships, or other upskilling that helps the businesses retain their employees here in Bellevue and provide upskilling that helps the businesses retain their employees here in Bellevue, and providing access to resources and spaces that help provide resiliency. That could be something like piloting a one-stop shop for our small business community, or things like helping the Bellevue Arts District Association with a strategic plan that would help them build capacity to market the neighborhood independent of the city. Staff would, of course, look for partnership opportunities with nonprofits and other community organizations, and we would like to make sure that this remains nimble and responsive as the business environment continues to change as the economy goes through this particular point in its cycle. Those are my comments, so with that, I will hand it back to Tony Call.
And our last presentation is from Mr. McCollman, so can I push forward to the next slide, sir?
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newen House, members of the council. It's a pleasure to speak before the council this evening. I know you don't hear from me very often. As City Manager Miyake shared last week at the opening presentation of the budget, the council has given helpful and clear policy direction all along the way, and I want to highlight another way that this budget responds to that direction and makes targeted investments toward the council vision statement. In a few places, the vision statement expresses a value of living in a clean city, making it the place where you want to be. That stated value is consistent with the feedback that we receive from the community. And in support of that important value, this budget invests another $300,000 into efforts to keep Bellevue clean and vibrant. These budget presentations have been highlighting how rapid growth is putting pressure on everything. You've heard much of that tonight. Existing practices for removing litter and graffiti are being stretched. Provided that the city council supports this recommendation, we will add one staff to the neighborhood team to organize and mobilize volunteer participation for targeted litter and debris collection around the city, including paying for equipment for volunteer safety and trash collection. It will also fund the development of standards and metrics. In addition, the clean city work will build upon an existing contracted service based on yet-to-be-developed criteria regarding special hardship to assist private property owners in the removal of graffiti and similar unwanted markings. Staff will also prepare a draft ordinance on graffiti and bring back some policy choices to get the council's direction for a final ordinance. As with all adjustments to programming, again, as much of what you've been hearing this evening, we will learn from these experiences, stay attentive to how the community is responding, and adapt accordingly. With that, I'll hand the meeting back to Mayor Robinson, and staff is available to take questions.
Okay, thank you. So, we'll start with Councilmember Lee, and we'll go down the dais this way.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I really don't have any questions. I think the staff has been doing tremendous work during the COVID, you know, recovery effort during the period, and it's the circumstances, you know, you cannot really, we cannot do much. You know, we don't know what the pandemic is going to influence us, how many people are going to be back to office, and we know small businesses are struggling, and I think we're working with other cities, you know, working together. The only thing I can recommend is how much more can we go to SBA, go to regional economic collaborations such as, you know, the Greater Seattle Partnership and the Economic Development District Board of the PSRC, and other communities that may have similar problems, but different, you know, priorities, but similar. So, one thing that I would focus by working on the regional basis is looking for common ground, commonality. We have our own uniqueness. Our small business is not quite the same as others' business. But the thing that's common is technology, so I would like to see what other common ground we can find. If we have technology as a common ground, we should probably spend more time working with other regions. Broadband is one, you know, some other cities, some other, which kind is interested in it, and we help out at the state level, helped out at the county level, and we should go to the federal government right now. They have lots of money for infrastructure, but they're going to give some to us, give some to somebody else, particular to our needs. But together, I think we can say, hey, what, how can we ask together on a common ground, which is technology, you know, AI technology, autonomous 5G. We have companies here, we have talents here, they're all interested in it. So, if we can just, you know, put this collaboration together better, you're doing a great job. So, compliment to you guys, and thank you.
Great. Okay, Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I want to echo Councilmember Lee's comments. I think this is something we've been doing pretty successfully, but we need to continue and find other avenues, and you've built some partnerships with other cities around us, and I think that helps in terms of a lot of ways, and we don't even know about, but it just helps us all be more vital. It's, you know, it looks like when you look at all these millions, it's a lot of money, but, you know, 7.6 million, you can maybe buy five houses in Bellevue, but it's the small parts, and I know we're very good at working with the different groups, and I would like to see some more, and I know you probably have it here, but I know we've had some good strategies for getting, working with small businesses and how we can work with them. Could you just give me a little bit of an idea on a couple of these grants? How do you decide where the need is and what are kind of the types of grants and the magnitude that are kind of prevalent when you get to working on this?
Sure, I'll let Jesse Canado speak to the small business grants, and then if you have questions about the human services grants, I'll be glad to field those for you, Councilmember Stokes.
Councilmember Stokes, with regards to the small business components, some of this is we are waiting for some of our regional partners, they are developing programs. The port is doing some fantastic things around business diversity. There are some great things coming out of the Workforce Development Council, so we're waiting for their work to advance to see how we can either partner and enhance or fill gaps that are being left behind. So, with regards to, you know, some of the direct opportunities with things like providing resources that support business resiliency, it might be something like a grant to the Old Bellevue Merchants Association to help them with a board facilitator, build a strategic plan that helps them reinforce their strengths and bring in more customers into the neighborhood. That would be a big help for OBMA from what we're hearing from them right now. So, that's an example of a direct grant that we would offer.
Well, that's one of those things where giving directly money to a small business is helpful, but doing this kind of thing probably has an even greater effect on it.
There is a multiplier effect when we work with community organizations.
I appreciate that. You're doing a great job on this, and it's, I'd be very happy to, you know, put the vote, my name on it when it comes time. It's very good. Yeah, what about the other human services?
Yeah, human services grants, so the amount we're recommending for RFPs, we will issue probably around January, and we do ongoing collaboration and partnership with agencies. Council has provided great direction throughout the pandemic to expand our reach, to make sure that we are connecting with new emerging agencies, with culturally-specific agencies, and with agencies that reach some of our populations whose voices we may not always hear. So, we have expanded our relationship with a broader number of agencies, and we saw that through the application process for the Human Services Fund. That's what led to such a large influx in requests and funding. So, we would reach back out to all of those agencies to make them aware of the RFP process, and then those would come in front of our commission with the process that I know you're very familiar with, where they will review those applications and come back to you with recommendations.
Yeah, that's great. I remember some conversations we had, you know, years back where it was clear that some of the agents, some of the companies and people trying to get started, particularly in, you know, small businesses and people of, you know, not in the mainstream, and were struggling, and, you know, people in minority communities were having trouble and didn't even, weren't even being included or having trouble finding how to do this, and you've tremendously improved that. I think it was several years ago we approached that, and I see the fruit of that coming forth is that we are getting to, getting more to people, helping them, and they come forward. And when you have more, then when you have more people asking for it, you know, you've done something positive on that, so that's great. Again, I think that--
Thank you, Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, I think that's very good. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Robertson.
Thanks. So, I'm supportive as proposed. I think this is, just the human services and the business grant funds are really important. At a time of high inflation, people, there's a lot of people that are still really hurting. They were hurt by the pandemic, they haven't gotten on their feet yet. I think that that's really good. Same thing with businesses, they're short-staffed, they're having rising costs, and a lot of them were badly hurt, so I think that this is really appropriate, and I support it. I do have a question that you don't necessarily have to answer tonight, but I just wanted to throw out there. Wouldn't have thought about this if I didn't read the news. There was an article on NPR, the local KOUW affiliate, yesterday about King County's grants to a lot of different agencies, and they have not, according to this article, there's been a lack of vetting, and there was one particular agency where the executive lied about all of his credentials. He was a registered sex offender, he's working with youth, big problem, right? Check the KOUW, it just came out last night. I assume, but do not want to ever assume, that our RFPs and contracts contain safeguards to make sure that the agencies we're working with have vetted, especially their top jobs folks, and that they will be doing criminal background checks on everyone that works with the city's money with youth and vulnerable adults. And if our RFP and contracts don't include that, I encourage you to read that article and send it to the attorney's office to amend them, because I don't want a story like that written about Bellevue. We should never be funding that kind of thing. But we want to fund the good things without giving money to someone who might, say, for example, be facing fraud charges like this fellow is. So, according to the story, don't know if it's true, but NPR is pretty reputable. So, that said, I'm really excited about it, just to make sure we put the safeguards in place. On the safe, clean, and vibrant city, I am very supportive of that as well. I think that I want to give props to the Clean and Green Team, which brought the idea of organizing volunteers to Bellevue. I think that's really great. We have a lot of people that want to help our city get stronger. And on graffiti, I absolutely support that, it's been a growing problem, and I wanted to give props to Deputy Mayor Newen House. He has been the one championing that idea, and I think it's, through, as raised by residents who are facing that issue, so really wanted to thank him for that as well. I think it was a good one. As I said last week, this budget really reflects a lot of the council's priorities, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'm going to start out with human services, and then we'll go through it. I'm going to start by thanking Councilmember Zahn for her bringing forward the safe parking program, and I'm really happy to see that funded. I think it looks like a great program, and I'm excited to implement it. I want to thank our federal congressional and senate leaders for bringing ARPA funds to Bellevue. They were in contact with us regularly about the needs that we were experiencing during COVID, and they really lobbied hard for us, and so I'm very appreciative of the funding that we are getting to help our community. I think the emphasis on rental assistance and childcare is super important, so I'm happy to see that in the budget. I'm curious, is if the 2.4 million for October of this year, is any of that going to go towards rental assistance, or do you know yet?
Yeah, the 2.4 million will be to replenish the program that council helped us launch last year, and so when we launched that last year, we went out to 14 different agencies to invite them to participate. We will go back out to those 14 agencies again, so some that at the time may not have had the capacity will be able to step into the program and reach out to the community again.
Terrific. That's such good news. Small business, I mean, small business is the soul of Bellevue, so I really appreciate the work that we're doing there, and I like the emphasis that Councilmember Barksdale has in retaining our small businesses as we see all the growth and challenges going on in Bellevue. The safe, clean, and vibrant city, I love the enhancing the outdoor cleanup program. I know the community's been really interested in having a program like that, so I appreciate it. I think we should be partnering with these groups, and so I'm sure you will, but I want to make sure we do partner with existing volunteer organizations. And then, thank you Deputy Mayor for your work on the graffiti cleanup. We get quite a few emails from people who've been tagged and don't know what to do about it or how to handle it, and I would love to see, like, a kit that somebody could come check out from the city that has everything you need to clean graffiti, because I know it takes special tools and chemicals or not chemicals, whatever, to get rid of things like that, and maybe a list of volunteers that if people can't do it themselves, people that can be called to go out and help a homeowner or property owner address the issue. So, I love it, I love the budget. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I love it too. So, and I'm very supportive of all three. As Mayor mentioned, very happy that Councilmember Zahn brought forward the safe parking pilot program. I think that is really worth our time and investment there, having seen them work very effectively across other cities. I think it's great to have the 400K in here in terms of the transition to the new permanent supportive men's shelter location. The outreach staff, great. My only question is regarding the vehicle residence compassionate enforcement. Would love, and you can answer it at the end or at a later time, would love to know how the $600,000 is going to help with that effort. You know, we've always been championing that compassionate enforcement, but some factoria residents might think that the enforcement piece is not quite as where it should be, I think, that they would say to us, so would love to hear how that's going to help. When I look at the human services, as has been mentioned before from Councilmember Robertson, there are literally people hanging by a thread still. And being to the liaison to the Human Services Commission, we hear the stories, we hear from our agencies that we work with, and we vet them very strongly. We work with some fantastic agencies that have done incredible work. We are always very cautious with new agencies. We certainly love what they can bring to our community, especially if they can get to parts of our community that we've had trouble reaching previously. But, so I think Councilmember Robertson's idea is a good one, we want to make sure that we're fully covered, but, you know, having come off the pandemic and with the potential of a recession, be it small as it might be next year, we really need to focus on these critical areas of need, and I think it's appropriately funded, especially the housing stability. We do not want to create more of a housing or homeless issue in the city of Bellevue. We want to make sure those are housed, remained housed, as well as all these other issues like childcare and food insecurity, et cetera, but that housing piece is just critical. So, love the breakdown with the ARPA funds. Having seen this previously, I think it's very well-positioned. The small business recovery, absolutely right. The mom-and-pop, as Councilmember Barksdale likes to say, is where our focus should be. They are, as the mayor said, our soul, and we want to make sure that they survive this very, very challenging time. And then, on the safe and clean, well, as City Manager has mentioned before, and it's part of our council vision, the safe, clean, and green, you know, the city in the park, I think this is, you know, a small amount of money that people will really notice, though, when they don't see the shopping carts, or when they don't see the litter that used to be there, or the graffiti that never seems to go away, and then it tends to grow on itself or build on itself. So, I think that's something that residents have been asking for and really want to ensure that Bellevue stays at that very green and clean place, so. So, very much, you know, love what we have here, and thank you so much for the great presentation, all four of you. Thank you.
Councilmember Zahn.
Yes, thank you. You know, I appreciate this thoughtful budget. It has so many elements in here that really support the community, and I'm just so thankful to the council for supporting the safe parking program, and also the increase in the direct outreach services, it is so key. So, I'm going to make a couple of comments and embed some questions, and you can answer at the end. I see that it's funding the 12-month pilot. I guess I would like to be optimistic and say it's going to be successful, so I'm concerned about, well, what about the next 12 months? So, if we have success, will we have actually funding to keep it going, or will we say, sorry, these 12, 20 spots you're going to have to go back into? So, I just wanted to check in on that. On the ARPA recovery, I think that's, I really appreciate your thoughtful look at how to balance the funds. The question I have there is if in 20, if now, we actually find that the 2.4 million doesn't quite cover and stretch what we're hearing-- what we're hearing from the community about the rent assistance and whatnot, do you have to come back, or can you actually draw on some of the 2.4 in 2023, '24? So I'm just concerned that by putting a number, a hard number, that if we actually have more need, that we're telling people to wait versus being able to leverage some of those funds? So that's another question I have. Thank you for the small business recovery. I guess what I'm wondering there is, and I think it was already commented on maybe earlier, is, you know, the city does a lot of purchasing. And so can we look at our own ability to purchase from the small businesses that are in our community, whether that's some of the food and other things? Encourage our staff that are coming into the office to shop and eat at the different places that's in Bellevue. So I'm wondering if there's a bit more we could be doing to support that. I love the partnership. Being a Port of Seattle employee, I know that they do a lot regionally. So if we could tag team, whether it's on the supplier diversity side, or on being able to do some kind of marketing to get people to spend local and shop local. And then, I guess the last one is, so excited that we're going to get going on the clean and green. You know, I agree that Steve Fantle in particular has been advocating. I've done many walks with him on the litter piece, as well as overdue. I want to make sure as we move forward with that, that we're not reinventing anything, because he's done a lot of research about other litter programs that are already in King County from other cities. So maybe we could, you know, do some in partnership together, as well as leveraging some of our businesses that may be, in fact, I believe that Republic Services came on one of the walks. And so, and I'm kind of thinking that there could be a lot of buzz around that, along with graffiti cleanup. You know, maybe we could have a mascot similar to the Transportation Bee. So I think those are things we can really do that's low cost, that engages with the community in a way that helps with many other things we're trying to do. So anyway, I think maybe one question in there, and then just really glad that we are getting going with these different pieces and parts.
You want to take the first?
Sure. Yeah, I think your question was about whether there is funding, should the Safe Parking Program be extended? And there is funding in this budget to extend the program for an additional year, if the council wished to do that.
Okay. And then I think the other question was, if we ended up needing more than the 2.4 million from ARPA, are we locked, or can we stretch?
Yep. So we factored that number in, knowing that we're not quite depleted on funds, but getting very, very close. And using the kind of approximate distribution rate over the past few months, absolutely, we will stay in close contact with Toni Coll and Pham. And if we start to notice that we think that that is not going to be the bridge that we needed, I'm sure she's a master. She'll bring us back in front of you and make something happen, I'm quite sure.
Yes. You guys are amazing. I appreciate this budget. Thank you.
And to be clear, what would happen is an earlier allocation of the other dollars. I'm not suggesting we would suddenly manufacture more dollars.
Okay. We got that. Councilmember Barksdale.
Yes, thank you.
Really appreciate the presentation, and also the suite of funding, if you will, if I can frame it that way, and also colleagues who brought priorities forward. That's reflected in the budget. I had a couple questions. One on the rental assistance as well, in terms of, glad to hear that we could stretch it. Longer term, what does that plan look like? Like, do you see this as a recurring? I mean, I imagine we're going to, with rising housing costs, we're going to, this is not just going to be a COVID, post-COVID, I mean, a COVID response, but a post-ongoing. So thoughts about where, how we can maybe set ourselves up for longer-term funding? And then the second question, yes, I love mom-and-pop shops, and supporting them on pop shops, as was raised before. So curious about if the, I didn't see an outcome, I saw an outcome with respect to spaces, and was curious if that includes sort of a program around helping mom-and-pop shops connect with developers who are willing to work with them on affordable, to provide affordable commercial spaces.
Go ahead.
So with regards to that question, yes, that's one of the opportunities we'll be looking at, particularly as we, as Bellevue takes back administration of Startup 425 in January. We'll be looking for opportunities to see how we can connect some of our first-time business owners with some of the programs that are being run by KDC, by Kimco, which owns Factoria, and ROIC, which owns Crossroads. So there are some good programs that those companies are already running, that we can help our small businesses tap into more easily going forward.
And then to your question about rent assistance, I think we're in a bit of a wait-and-see mode, to be honest with you. So it seems safe to assume, and all experts point to the fact, that we're not going to go back to the level of human service need that existed pre-pandemic. But it's yet to see how sustained it will be. So we did factor in regional resources that are available for rent assistance as well, recognizing that our residents can take advantage of those. And so those continue to exist, and we do want to make sure that our residents, we can both fund them with Bellevue dollars, but also participate in regional efforts to sustain housing for our residents. So I think the short answer would be, we will continue to alert you to the demand for human services that we need over the upcoming biennium, and have ongoing discussions about how to address that need.
And if there are any other funding strategies to provide, fund, longer-term funding for rental assistance, I'd be interested in that, as that surfaces, in addition to regional funding, I guess.
Yes, thank you.
Awesome. And the only other thing, I was just going to build on a couple of points around the green and clean and volunteers. I think Bellevue Essentials graduates might be a good pool to tap into for that. And then on partnering with businesses, many of the companies will have an employee match. So it'd be great to connect them to volunteer as well. Thank you.
Great idea. I know, thank you for that. I know a lot of us have submitted questions that we'd like you to come back to us on, and I think Deputy Mayor wanted to emphasize one of them.
No, just the R and B question that I mentioned. If we could add that to the question bank, that'd be great. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, great. So thank you.
Thank you.
Information only. Okay, we have one more study session item. Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce?
Mayor, thank you, Mayor. This is the last item on your study session agenda this evening. It is a presentation by a Regional Coalition for Housing, or also known as ARCH, with respect to the 2023 administrative budget, as well as the work program. And just by way of background, the interlocal agreement that we have with ARCH requires the member cities to approve both the ARCH, the following-year ARCH budget, as well as the program. So we are seeking council direction to prepare legislation at a future meeting to bring back on a consent calendar based on tonight's outcome of the meeting. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to you, Emile.
Thank you for the introduction, City Manager Miyake, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. I wanted to offer up some brief opening remarks before we get into the presentation. As a staff member who works on affordable housing on a daily basis, I can say that ARCH is a key partner for a lot of the work we do in implementing affordable housing in the city. As you're going to hear in the presentation tonight, ARCH plays an essential role in putting together affordable housing unit deals in the city, helping with the ongoing administration, and acting as a key planning resource for the city staff. You'll also hear a bit tonight about the significant work that we have on the 2023 work program, and the commensurate budget that accompanies that. Bellevue's been increasing our number of land use incentive units and MFTE units just in the past couple years, and we see that trajectory continuing. So that's why it's important to have council understand this work program and the budget of ARCH. You'll also be hearing a bit about a increase to the 2023 budget as compared to the 2022 amount. That amount is included in the city manager's preliminary budget. So we have that increased amount already accounted for in the budget. What we are asking for tonight is direction from council to come back with a resolution at a future meeting to have formal approval of the ARCH admin budget and work program for 2023. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Lindsay Masters, and she's going to walk through a brief presentation for you.
Thanks, Emile. See if I can get close enough to this one. It's great to be back. Thanks for having me. For tonight, I'd love to cover primarily our budget and work program, but also take a moment to let you know that ARCH is celebrating our 30th anniversary. We were founded in 1992, and we just wanted to kind of mark this occasion and talk through some of the accomplishments of the last few decades. So I'll get right into it. Bellevue was one of the leading cities that came up with the concept to create ARCH. Visionary leaders at that time, and a housing, Citizens Housing Task Force at that time, developed this concept, and decided to form ARCH through an interlocal agreement. At the time, it was a very innovative and new approach to tackling affordable housing that recognized that this is a regional issue, and that pooling resources, both technical resources, capital resources, staff resources, was going to be a benefit to the region. Over the years, we have expanded from our three original founding member cities to now 15 jurisdictions in East King County, and as well, King County was an original member. We have a broader sphere of influence that we operate in throughout the east side, so that we are able to support housing efforts as well in some of the unincorporated areas. I managed to try and fit three decades of accomplishments into one slide, so just wanted to keep it brief. Collectively, the efforts of ARCH members have resulted in the production or preservation of over 5,200 units of affordable housing, pooling together $88 billion in local resources from our members, which themselves went on to leverage another billion dollars in other public and private funds. We have now supported 10 different cities to adopt local incentive or inclusionary housing programs. Those themselves have yielded another 2,800 affordable units, and we have many more developments in the pipeline that currently have probably about another 800 units in them, plus more we may not know about yet. We have collectively established a centralized system for monitoring and ensuring that affordable units remain affordable, and so that cities can gain efficiencies by centralizing those resources together. And we have also stood up a homeownership program that creates access to homeownership in East King County for low and moderate-income households, including many first-time homebuyers. This is a unique approach to permanently affordable homeownership that shares equity between homeowners and the public. And it's created, at the last time we last studied this, over $90 million in equity for low and moderate-income families. Another important piece of ARCH's work over the decades has been really embedding ourselves into cities' policy and planning efforts. We support cities as they request our assistance on working on local plans and housing strategies, actual code amendments and regulations that are aimed at creating more affordable housing. We're really pleased that this model has now been recognized as a really effective approach for jurisdictions to work together on what can be a very complex regional issue. Our model has now been replicated in other communities from South King County to Snohomish County, and now Pierce County. So on to the proposed administrative budget for next year. This year, as I've come before you in the past and talked about some of our efforts, it's a continuation of that work in evaluating the need for our capacity to grow with the growth in city programs and the growth in need for affordable housing. This year, we are proposing a net of two new positions within our program. These are going to be focused on growing our capacity for that program administration, for particularly local incentive programs. As Emile noted, the MFTE program in Bellevue is going to be a significant area of growth, we're expecting. We also had some discussion amongst some of our cities who really wanted to see more support for planning capacity. We decided that we would take an approach of setting aside some one-time funding that those cities could tap into for consultant support, and we'd come back and discuss whether it makes sense to add staff for that need in the future. For this year, because the primary focus for the new capacity benefits the majority of our membership, those costs are allocated to the base member dues that all the members share. We also are projecting some increases in fee revenue that kind of offsets the need to put those costs into dues. Bellevue's total contribution is $429,000, and that is up from $344,000 in 2022. And as Emile noted, that is included in the city manager's proposed Our work program continues to have the same foundational pillars, from investing affordable housing resources, supporting policy and planning efforts, administering the growing number of local city incentive programs, and then providing stewardship and compliance monitoring for both homeownership program units, as well as rental program units. In addition, a not-as-often-discussed part of our work is our outreach and work with the community to assist people searching for affordable housing. We have seen a great increase in activity in this area of our work. Have not yet increased our staff capacity on this front, but we do believe that the new staff positions we'll create will help relieve some of the pressure on that front. And then finally, there's the administrative support to keep the coalition going. Wanted to highlight just some of the priorities that were elevated in the work program. This is something we ask the ARCH board to define each year, so that we know, out of the many things within the work program, where we really want to focus and make sure we're able to come back and report results. The first couple areas really speak to the timeliness of the comprehensive plan work that cities are doing this coming year. It's already, it's already started. We expect to be providing a comprehensive set of housing needs data and analysis for all our member jurisdictions that can either serve as the basis for their housing element, or supplement additional housing needs data that they may be obtaining. We are also expecting that as the Department of Commerce and King County establish different methodologies for establishing targets at the local level, that we'll be convening our members to talk about how our comp plans can collectively support analysis that show how we're planning for meeting those needs. We know that some of those strategies are going to be regional strategies, so it's important to convene that coordination. We also know there's going to be an ongoing reporting requirement for all the jurisdictions planning under GMA, and so we expect, we will continue, as we have in the past, to be the databank for cities to be able to tap into that data when they need it. In addition, this year, we felt that it was very timely to try to bring back the conversation about dedicated affordable housing revenue sources. Bellevue's done a really great job of stepping up its investment in affordable housing. For other member jurisdictions, it's not as easy to do that with the general fund resources that they have. And so we decided we'd convene additional conversation heading into next legislative session to talk about what potential advocacy or tools cities might want to take a look at. We are continuing to expand our capacity, as noted in the budget portion of the presentation. And as a part of that, we are focusing on the compliance monitoring portion of ARCH's work. Cities are continuing to modify their regulations and how they're setting up programs. And as those, as that landscape becomes bigger and more complex, we really want to make sure we're maintaining a streamlined interface for all the different groups we work with, developers, property managers, tenants, homeowners, and homebuyers. Finally, we had a particular issue come up this year around pretty dramatic rent increases within many of the affordable housing programs that we monitor, excuse me, that we administer. And we wanted to take a moment to study that issue, examine different policy options, convene city staff to discuss what future regulations cities might want to consider to address those issues. I will probably come back at a future date to give more detail about that, but that's something we're going to take a close look at in the next year. As you all know, we are also conveni, or excuse me, we are also running a funding round each year on behalf of all of our cities pooling funds into the ARCH Trust Fund. We do our very best each year to make maximum use of those resources, leverage them to the greatest extent possible, and make sure the high-impact projects are getting funded in the region. And then finally, we do hope next, in the next year, to stand up a strategic planning process that are, that will help our members come together and think about how they want to use ARCH in the future, how they want to grow their various strategies around housing. I'll close with some more detail about our specific activities outlined within the work program in Bellevue. I'll close with some more detail about our specific activities outlined within the work program in Bellevue. We typically have a placeholder each year to support whatever the city determines it wants to enact from its affordable housing strategy. We're expecting in this coming year, that could include development opportunities on public or nonprofit or faith-based-owned land. It could include support for analyzing affordable housing incentives within some of your, some of your planning areas. We expect also there might be some city-led efforts for selecting developers or putting together a funding strategy for any TOD sites on public lands and we'd be providing expertise and support on that. On an ongoing basis, we will be continuing to administer Bellevue's existing housing incentive programs as well as any new incentives that the city elects to establish. We will continue the monitoring functions that come as all those new units come online. As I mentioned, we do expect a pretty large bubble of units coming from the MFTE program that will start coming online in this next year. And as part of that, we provide a lot of onsite training for property managers at the time of lease-up. We, as mentioned, we will be supporting housing needs assessment work and we will, sorry, this list gets long. We will also be participating in the really important project going on next to the operations and maintenance facility that has at least 280 affordable units planned, helping to put together the financing and potential additional funding package for that. We know there's some, one bullet for your next right work, that's a lot of work contained in that bullet and so we expect we'll also be providing some support as requested on that. Finally, a really important area of work for us, this has been a big focus for us in the last year, is establishing the Housing Stability Program, which is funded by your 0.1% sales tax and having an ongoing capital funding mechanism. So we will be hoping to hire some staff, as you all approved, some additional resources for staffing for this program. And for the time being, we'll continue this with existing staff, but that's going to be an ongoing request for proposals process, working with developers early on to provide technical assistance and pre-application support, doing the actual technical analysis of applications to support an interdepartmental staff committee to make funding recommendations back to you all. And then, of course, as we do with our regional resources, making sure that you're able to leverage those funds and bring in other resources into the projects. Finally, we will be executing all the legal agreements that come once the funds are approved and overseeing the disbursements. And that sums it up.
Yeah, so with that, we can hand it back over to Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to start and then we'll kind of, I'm going to start from the middle and work out. So congratulations, you know, 30 years of accomplishments and your work is, in my mind, just beginning. It's really impressive to see all that you've done and then look at the work plan and see all that you're going to do next. I'm really excited about it. I appreciate the data bank for the GMA. I think that's really important. I would like to see more affordable housing data and at what levels, when I talk about affordable housing in Bellevue and at what levels. It's really hard to get all that data.
Lives in many different places.
Yeah, staff works really hard to help me with that, but it'd be great if you could work on that and have a running tally of where it is and what affordabilities. Let's see, I love the 2023 work plan and I appreciate including some research on rental protection policies and a recommendation. That's very helpful. I wonder, is it appropriate for you to be looking into the voucher program at all and to see how we can make that more effective? I know that two things I'm interested in. One is, how do we make it easier for people to use vouchers in our city? What are the roadblocks and is there anything that can be done to make it easier for people with a voucher to get housing here? And the other thing is, how do we make renting housing more equitable in our city? I know for some people, they come in to rent and they're charged more upfront than somebody else's. I know it's not supposed to be that way, but I hear about it all the time. And I just wondered, do we look into that at all? Is there anything we can do to look into that and identify what's going on and make that more equitable?
Yeah, I'd be happy to respond to those really great comments. So regarding the affordable housing data, I'm right there with you. It's an issue every jurisdiction faces, is how do you get a collective picture in one place? So I think Arch has done a pretty good job of collecting a lot of it, but there's always updating, maintaining, making sure you have the most up-to-date. And there are particular sources of that data that can be harder to update. So we're going to keep working on that. We've made some improvements, but we've got, we've got a ways to go as well. I totally am with you on the voucher program as well. I'd be happy to speak with our partners at the King County Housing Authority about what Arch might be able to do to help with that. We do a pretty great job partnering already on finding opportunities to project-based vouchers, which is one of the ways you can make sure that those opportunities are in your community. But there are still many tenant-based vouchers out there that are very difficult to place and if there's a way we can help with that, we'd love to do that. Finally, I think, I think the last issue might be around fair housing investigations and enforcements. That's not something Arch members have ever collectively funded in the past. They may have done that individually. But I do believe that there has been testing in our jurisdictions and we've had, been able to get some of that data, which is disturbing when you look at it. We should, we would be happy to kind of, as a part of our next conversation around our work program, decide if there's enough shared interests among our members that we could kind of include that. We do receive pretty regularly calls from people who have those concerns and so we do our best to refer them to other agencies and resources where they can have their complaints looked at. But in addition, there's probably more we could all be doing on that front.
Thank you. And my last thing is, can you please work hard on coordinated entry? Everybody knows there needs to be a change, but we've been talking about for five years that I know of and there's been no change. So I would love you to coordinate with the King County Regional Housing Authority and see what we can do to make that functional.
Yes, yes, we have, we've had some good conversations about it, but it's never fast enough, so.
Like some action. Thank you so much. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think I'll be quick. I really liked the presentation, thank you. I really like the work program priorities. I think it's right in line in terms of what I'm looking for here and especially appreciate the ongoing compliance tools for all the evolving programs, as you rightly pointed out, and changing, I guess, the cities are changing rules or changing their, what they're looking for in terms of compliance. So I'm glad we're staying on top of that. I think that's really, really important. Quite frankly, I'm happy that you're going to have to work hard because all these units are going to come online because of the MFTE program. It is a good thing. And that's what we all desperately want, so. So only real question I had was the increase, the administrative increase and then I see Bellevue's contribution just under $430,000. Are all other cities seeing an increase administrative as well, or that's just all coming from the city of Bellevue?
No, it's allocated to all the city's dues pretty proportionately, so it's per capita.
Great.
If your population's been growing slower, you might see a little bit of less increase, but roughly the same.
Okay, great, thank you. And supportive of this moving forward, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Robertson.
So thanks for coming and staying so late. The, I particularly like the Bellevue planning work plan that was in the back of your 17-page memo in the packet. I think that that really hits all cylinders of what we're looking to do. I did have a question about the comp plan support and the housing analysis. You talked about GMA and Kennewood planning policies. Is it safe to assume that the growth targets that were adopted by King County are going to be part of that analysis?
So I think what I'm referring to there, you're welcome to add on to this too. But is there's going to be a subset of affordable housing targets that are, that are within your growth targets and that those would specify particular units at different affordability levels that we're planning, hoping to plan for and achieve?
Okay, that's great. Yeah, we haven't seen those targets yet, have we?
They are not finalized yet.
I know, I keep waiting, waiting. So, and yeah, I mean, I support the budget. I do think that Arch is doing well to be the trusted advisor, convener, data bank and administrator for these programs. I am a little concerned with some of the planning, how some of the planning projects are categorized or drafted. For example, the east side housing levy. I don't know, as I sit here today, that that's something Bellevue needs. We have the $1,590 money, we've been using that well and will continue to do so. So while I have no issue with there being a convening and a discussion, I would like Arch to continue to be the trusted advisor and not the policy advocate for that and other things because each city that's a member of Arch has an elected council. Those are the policymakers and Arch is a resource. So to the extent that any of these planning activities bleed into the, we're going to be a policy advocate, I would, my personal perspective is that is not Arch's role. I would like, not like to see this increase in funding fund that. I want to keep you as a trusted advisor and convener, data bank and administrator. Thanks.
Now, I just asked her to give us advice on policy.
Because we were asking for advice.
Yes.
Right? That's not being an advocate, that's being a trusted advisor and there's a difference. Thank you.
Councilmember Zion.
Yes, thank you. You know, I, I'm really grateful that you have such a thoughtful, you know, budget and modest increase. To me, $429,000 of cost for all of the benefits that we're getting from Arch is tremendous and the fact that you've been in existence for 30 years. I still remember making a video highlighting Arch back in 1997 and, because people didn't know about it and it was on BHS tape. That's how old it is. And so this program's been around for a long time and I really appreciate all of the work that you do to support the work that we are doing here. And the housing needs analysis, I think that is so key in understanding what affordability levels that we need to be targeting. The data bank, I really like that. Doing, looking, doing a strategic plan, because that's what Bellevue does, is we're very thoughtful about making sure that we're planning for the future and so having Arch as a partner with that is really important. I will say that when I look at the budget, though, I do wonder if we do have enough staff for outreach that as we see the level of people that might be displaced and in need from the high level of rent increases, I do wonder whether we have enough resources for that already. And as we then look at support for renters, whether you have resources to do the broad outreach to our community-based organizations to help people where English might not be their first language and doesn't completely understand what resources there might be. And I guess this is where, the other comment I would make is, on the piece around looking at options for dedicated revenue sources, and maybe I see Mike Cotterman, so maybe I misremembered, but I believe that in our next right work, housing levy was actually one of the items on our next right work that we, the council, actually had on the work plan. And if that's the case, you're not actually acting on your own, you're actually supporting something that we on the council had actually talked about. So that's actually a clarification I'd like to have from Mike to make sure that we are all on the same page. And then lastly, I'm super excited about the $1,590 funds and to the degree that Arch can really help us with, you know, how do we find those developers that maybe didn't understand that the first time we went out with an RFP, that we actually have this housing stability program with funding available? And we want to, we want to solicit and grow the developers that might be interested in building the kind of housing because I've been very anxious that if we can get the partners that are interested, we can bond against those future revenues and actually build even faster for the affordable housing gap that we know we already have. So those were comments and a couple of questions. Thanks.
And Mayor, I'd be happy to provide a clarification. So that, the housing levy was one of the 16 items that was on the Next Right Work list. We identified that as something that we would defer at this point because of the work that was being done by Arch to have that conversation. So it was another ongoing effort that was outside of the Next Right Work and we said we weren't recommending that at this time. But it is, it's still on the list for future consideration.
Okay, and potentially with Arch to do some of that legwork to understand what are some of these different nuances or approaches?
And I'll ask Lindsay to follow up on this. My understanding is that there, that Arch is facilitating conversations around different funding sources, different ongoing revenue sources that Arch could use and those could be individual cities that would look at those or something that could be done as the consortium itself. So I'm not sure what the status of those conversations are. Maybe you could elaborate a little bit on that.
Sure. And some of this, we do expect to be reporting back to all of you with kind of a summary of the outreach we've done and some of the key themes. We did host a number of focus groups this summer to go through many of the different revenue options. A property tax levy is one of them. It's already something cities have the option to do. So that was one option that we included in the discussion. We are kind of summarizing that input and having a discussion with the Arch Board right now to figure out how to share this information with councils, what potential legislative advocacy we might want to have folks consider. And I think the bottom line is there are a lot of great tools that are, are good ideas. Cities might want to consider those individually. An important theme we did hear that I'm happy to share here is that there was a strong interest from just about everybody that participated that we want to do something together. And so that's, that's an exciting piece of feedback. It's just kind of figuring out what's the right tool and how do we get the right authority to move something forward. But there's certainly a lot more conversation and discussion that needs to happen on that front and so we look forward to sharing more of that soon.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Can you comment on the outreach and staff for that?
Yes. Yeah, I can speak for our whole staff to say we feel that. We feel that need on a regular basis. It is a strain on us trying to do all the other work that we are trying to do, responding to folks who are really frustrated, who are in difficult situations. The limited services we are able to provide, I think, help some, but it doesn't help a lot of the people who are looking for help. Our waitlist grew from, I think around 2,000 when I first started to well over 7,000 now that we folks who just are signed up, waiting to hear about an affordable housing opportunity. And that's not even kind of speaking to the folks who are in housing situations, who are having trouble maintaining those. So it's, it's bigger than Arch, it's kind of bigger than Bellevue. It's a, it's a really big issue across the region. And so part of the, part of the question is, where do you put the resources to addressing that? And so that's something, I think, certainly as, as the request from the mayor, worthy of discussion and worthy of our whole coalition coming together and talking about how to prioritize amongst all the needs that are out there.
Okay, thank you. I look forward to hearing more about the conversation and what are some additional resources we might want to put into this.
Thank you. Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, thank you. This has been a really good conversation. I don't want to repeat a lot of stuff that's gone by, but I do want to emphasize that we, it would really be helpful to have better data on the affordable housing. We have these conversations and, you know, you get different numbers pop up and some people think we've done a lot, some people have worries and be helpful just to see. I know we've done a lot and it'd be helpful in that and then that gives us a much better way to say, where do we want to go from there? So we can work on that. I think that's, that's very good. And, you know, I like to have discussion on the coordinated entry. And the other thing that I think is, you know, on this east side housing levy and the conversation and Councilmember Robertson's comment on this, I think there's this place in there where, yeah, Arch shouldn't be setting public policy or, you know, that, but. but I do think the right role is what you've discussed in terms of, and you've mentioned that too, Mike, and you're working on this, and I'd like to have that conversation come back to us, but when you get everybody together and everybody's unified and all, then, and you can be a catalyst for this, and that's very appropriate. But it's not going out and then, you know, Arch is out there campaigning for it. But I think there's a role, because you really do bring people together, and you're, you're the conduit or the, you know, facility that gets people working together and more unified and getting more work done. So I think that's something we can, you know, work out. I'm not too worried about that part. But you don't want to get down some rabbit hole on, on those things in certain extent, so you know that. Anyhow, just great. I, there's a lot of, a lot of things here that are, that you're doing, and I do want to say it's very clear that you have, I want to give you kudos personally, and the staff, and our staff working with you. I think there's been great advances in, in Arch and the communications, the way it works and everything together. And, you know, some of that's just natural growth, I think, but it takes leaders to do that, and I appreciate that. We all appreciate that, so just wanted to say that. So I'm ready to approve, approve this when time comes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Berksdale.
Also, just want to say thank you. As I was looking at, as you were going through sort of the pillars and the work program, the first thought that came to mind for me was you've got your work cut out for you. But it is all important work, so I wholeheartedly support the budget and work plan. I'll just add to that, surprise, surprise, I like the idea of the data bank. One question for you, you mentioned it's gonna come from various sources, any idea of where those, what those sources are gonna be at the moment?
Without data? A lot of it is cities. We get a lot of that data from cities. Much of it comes from the King County Housing Authority. Oh, yes, excuse me. There's a number of other public agencies also who maintain, maintain at a state level, much of which is about housing locally on the ground. So there's, there's a whole different variety of primarily public entities who hold that data, some local, some countywide, some state. It's putting that all together.
That's, that's gonna be really exciting to see. I think also if there's any way to bring in census data, I think that would be helpful as well. Just in terms of the two topics that have come up already, the renter protection program, interested in that discussion and learning more about what we can do there. And also in terms of the housing levy, I think Councilmember Stokes had highlighted already that you end up as a subject matter expert from the conversations and the work that you're doing. So I value that and look forward to the discussion and recommendations you have around that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee.
As you know, I've looked at Arch as a model for regional collaboration, started by Bellevue. For the last 30 years in your existence, you know, I've been, working with Arch for the last 28 plus, this year's 29th. And we trust you, as Councilmember Robertson said. Arch is such a great model, it's a regional model, and Noah has done that before, and it's your trusted, she said, advisor. So you play a valuable role, and I said many times, you are the beginning of affordable housing for our population. And the needs are different then, as it is now, but you have met the needs, and if you keep on meeting needs as the needs change. So, you know, when you come to us for approval, you know, we always have a lot of confidence, and we have good staff, good people working, and as a result, it's proven, right? Other cities join us, and we're very happy. King County worked well with us, we got money, we did all the things. I don't have to go through all the things that you started with, you know, initiatives, women in transition with their families and so on and so on. Now it's changed. Now we're looking at much, much bigger, more complicated affordable housing program. You know, normally, you know, if your Arch come to us without all the complexity, I would say, yes, I would, you know, maybe ask a few questions, would probably approve it. One of which is, obviously, you have a 20, 20 odd percent increase in your budget. That's a big chunk of increase. You know, but hey, that's what needs to be, that needs to be done. But the problem, the concern I have is, you know, I'm not sure I'm quite comfortable, because what role are you playing in, in all this complex questions, roles, complexity of affordable housing? You know, where do you, you know, I think the question I have, I think you asked the question, where do you put all the resources? You know, because you are actually working in the affordable housing arena, and there's many people in that arena now, you know, nonprofits you are, who are special interest groups, homeless shelters, and various housing advocates and all that stuff. So I, I don't know. I really don't know. I don't know whether you know for sure, and I don't know whether our staff gets, knows all for sure, because it's all mixed together. So I would like to know that, number one. And two, I want to, I have my own personal preferences. I would like to have you maintain your role as a trusted advisor for the city of Bellevue, working collaboratively with other regional entities and toward this bigger goal of affordable housing. It's not just affordable anymore, it's housing questions and rental, ownership, whichever category you're talking about, whichever need, it's really expanded, okay? No longer one or the other. I mean, so, but in order for you to function properly, don't get confused, we'd love to have you solve what's a problem for us, you know, but that's probably not realistic. And I want to know that we don't take the easy route. You know, you are probably the most proven agency, so we tend to go to you, use you to do this, do this, you know? And I think that's likely, because, you know, we don't normally say no, we just keep doing it, because you think, well, there's a council policy, there's a regional requirement, regional demand, staff say, let's go do it. But we are going to be difficult to do anything properly if we are not sure what we are doing. We got confused, we step on other people's toes, we step on, looking at this, looking at that, we, we double, do whatever, you know, it's not effective. And so I want to know, the people you're hiring, the program you're doing, the money we're giving you, increase, whatever, is you want to do what you are entrusted to do as trusted advisor, as part of the partner in this whole regional issue of housing? And I don't know. I mean, I confess to you, I'm, I don't know, I'm ignorant. So this is why I am. So I'm not sure if I would say, hey, give you the money. I would love to give you the money as long as it's within the role that we understand you're gonna do, okay? Otherwise, I'd say, well, gee, are we not double dipping, doing something, counteract other people what they're doing, maybe getting each other's back or not, you know? Some of the description are very good, you know, data bank, getting information, other people not getting. I would love to see you do all those things. But if you're not, otherwise, we're just going to the same part and dipping the HB20, whatever, 1580 money or something. Hey, let's spend it, let's do it. That's not what I would like to do. So you can answer a little bit, and then maybe, I don't know whether you can answer it all, because it sounded like, I, I'm, I sound like I'm asking a lot of questions, but maybe it's very simple. If you have a simple answer.
Well, I think, I think what I heard Councilmember Lee primarily is, I think you're looking for some assurance that the monies are being spent for the things that we're talking about doing and that they're being effective in terms of how we're applying those.
Appropriately in the right agencies.
Yes.
I don't want to mix Arch with another agency that you're going to the homeless shelter business, whatever.
You know, let's stick to policy here. Let's stick to policy.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying. I'm just giving you an example.
Well, I think you're going beyond that. Let's just stick to policy.
So what's the policy I'm talking about?
Well, I think policy, and I, and I can give you from three different perspectives. I've worked with Arch now in three different capacities, and I can tell you that, as, as a council member mentioned earlier, we get a lot of bang for the buck out of the amount of money that goes into the Arch programs. And the accounting that they have to do, because they're, they're tracking dollars from 15 jurisdictions and also from many outside agencies that provide additional funding to all the projects that go on, and they do a phenomenal job in tracking all of that. So the monies are, they're all accounted for, they're well-spent. I don't think we're stepping on any toes in the region, and actually, if anything, I think, if I can take that metaphor a little further, I think we're bringing more people to the dance and not stepping on their toes while we're dancing with them, because it's accomplishing a lot in, in the process that we wouldn't be accomplishing on our own. Any jurisdiction wouldn't be able to do on their own.
And I will say that you are working from our value system, from our council priorities. I mean, you're doing the work that we've asked you to do, and this budget proposal is a reflection of that. So I think we're ready for a motion.
I would direct that for their legislation, approving the Arch 2023 Administrative Budget and Work Program, consistent with and pursuant to the Arch Interlocal Agreement, for consideration on a future consent calendar.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I don't have all the answers. I'd like to get some more, and I'll change my mind during the budget deliberation.
Do you want to?
If you can adjudicate me, thank you.
So you're voting no tonight?
I'm voting no today.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, I think we are done here.
Thank you.
And our meeting is adjourned.